Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, July 17, 2023. I am Select Board Chair Eric Helmath. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, signed into law on March 29, 2023, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation in public meetings until March 31, 2025. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and people watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Before we go further, I want to mention that our town manager was stuck out of state due to all the flights to Boston being canceled yesterday, and I understand, sir, that your first flight available is tomorrow, so he has to join us remotely. So thank you for doing so.
Glad to be here.
No, you're not here for the party. We will, yeah, we have all our Select Board members here, so we don't have to take more call points as a matter of course. Okay, first up on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. This is approval of the minutes of two meetings, June 21 and June 26 of this year. Request for a special one-day beer and wine license on the 27th of July at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a town manager retirement party. Request for another such license at Reservoir Beach on August 18 for the Beach Concert Series and Beer Gardens. It's a continuation request from a prior approval. Request special one-day beer and wine license on August 26 at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event. And a request for another special one-day beer and wine license, August 26 of this year, at Reservoir Beach for Reservoir Dogs. No entertaining discussion or motions?
Second.
Any discussion?
Reservoir Dogs? That's an interesting event. So it's cool. So we're also having the event at the Jason Russell House Saturday that week? Do we know?
If we are, it's not on the consent agenda, but...
No, no, I'm just curious. I mean, it's kind of cool that we might have two. Are we on the 26th?
Well, it's not...
Are we also having, you know, Beer Garden at Jason Russell on the 26th?
Not that I've heard of, no.
Okay, all right, so just curious. If we're having two on one day, that would be an interesting demand situation, you know, so. The kind of questions I ask early in the meeting.
Indeed. Any further discussion? On a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the consent agenda. Next up, we have for approval, Middle Eastern Dance Show by Said at Whittamore Park on Thursday, August 17, 2023, and that is from Claudia Donnet. I have been in touch with Ms. Donnet and also the Arlington Cultural Council. She had a work conflict tonight. She's scheduled for her job and just, despite her misfortunes, could not be here, so I procured some information from her ahead of time, and I can inform the board. She has done two of these same events at Broadway Plaza in town previously that were successful. She was awarded a cash grant from the Arlington Cultural Council for these programs, and she would be very happy if, I'd suggest the board could either move approval tonight or if they want, move a conditional approval and empower the chair to approve based on any questions you might want me to bring back to her tonight. Or you can, you know, you can do whatever you want, but those, I talked with her enough and received a very nice letter from Brian McMurray, who's on the Cultural Council, to kind of vouch for their being impressed with the program. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move approval, subject to all conditions here, and with the understanding that the start date time is just a housekeeping thing. Where it says 6:00 p.m. to 7:15, it's the board's understanding of vote because of what's below. It's 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. With setup and breakdown. Thank you.
Technicalities matter. Thank you very much, Mrs. Mahan.
In a courtroom, they do.
Second, with no questions.
Any further discussion? All right, on a motion from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimously approved. Okay, item eight, we have license under licenses and permits. We have a for approval common vitular license, Turmeric House, Ananda Park Road, 444 Massachusetts Avenue. Yes, yeah, come on up to the table. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Please introduce yourself and summarize your application.
I'm sorry?
Introduce yourself and summarize your presentation, your application.
Yes. So we are applying for the, we have a restaurant, Turmeric House, and we are applying the license for the, we are actually buying existing business, Rangla Punjab, and changing name to Turmeric House. It will be Indian and Nepali cuisine. So I've been working on this. I'm executive chef for the restaurant as well as a partner, and he's my general manager, Mahesh Shai. We have a bill, we have a team, so we've, we're looking forward to do business in Arlington, Massachusetts, for a while. Luckily, we got the place, so we are eager to do business here.
Thank you. And I'll turn to the board for any questions, comments, motions? Mrs. Mahan?
Move approval and one comment, please.
Welcome to Arlington.
Thank you very much.
I know, because you've done this before and as your manager, that you're well versed with it and you definitely have a maintenance plan, as well as this is a pre-existing. Did you say where one of the Punjabs were? Is that where you're going in?
Rangla Punjab.
Oh, okay. And just, just so you know, where we have a lot of residences that are near the businesses, there seems to be this unusual thing that happens that when a new restaurant indoor manager comes in, somehow the delivery trucks, which have a routine established with the previous restaurant and manager, somehow, sometimes they bump you to a more inopportune time for the neighbors. So if you could just make sure that when you're there, just say you want to keep the same time.
Sure, we'll coordinate with the city hall rules, whatever its rules, we'll follow it. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second. Mr. Hurd? Further discussion and questions? Okay, on a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you for doing business in Arlington.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, next up, we have the continuation of the hearing for approval on all alcohol package store from Nykant at 232, Nykant 232 Incorporated. Yashika Patel, owner, manager, 232 Mass Ave, Andrew Upton, attorney, welcome back, folks.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew Upton for the applicant with me.
Thank you. And before you start, I just want to inform the public and the board that at the last hearing, we had informal public comment during the open forum period of the portion of the meeting which followed immediately the presentation. I'm very confident that the board members were attentive to that. However, I learned after the meeting that as a matter of procedural technicality, those comments were not, would not be considered on the record for the purposes of the alcohol, the package store license hearing that we are now commencing. Therefore, I contacted or asked my colleagues in the board office to contact each person who made informal comments at a previous meeting, whether or not they were in favor or opposed, and invited them to come tonight for a formal period of public comment, either in the room here or over Zoom. So with my apologies to those of you who may be here for a second time, I wanted to make that clear and explain why you may be hearing from the same people again. So tonight, we will, after a presentation from the applicant, I will entertain public comment, and then I'll turn to the board for questions and comments and motions. Mr. Heim, Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like me to just refresh everybody in terms of where we are in posture?
Yes, that would be excellent. Thank you, sir.
Terrific. So at the initial hearing, the applicant presented a basic presentation with respect to their applications for a package store, and the board engaged in some colloquial discussion. There were some questions about the substance of the application. However, the board expressed some concern about some updates that had been made to the application and really what was going to be before the board in terms of what it was voting on, so requested that the applicant formally revise their application and come back for further discussions and consideration before the board. Just so we're clear in terms of the scope of the inquiry, the board received a memo with respect to this sort of criteria for evaluating any package store license application throughout the Commonwealth. If the board has any questions about that, I'm happy to address them. Whether you, if you decide to grant the license tonight, you may put certain reasonable conditions on that license. If you decide to deny the license, you want to make sure that you have enough information to provide the basis for a written decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. That was most helpful. Any questions from my colleagues that's on procedure for tonight's hearing before we begin? Okay, I turn it over to Attorney Upton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Andrew Upton for the applicant. With me is Neelash Patel, who is the husband of the proposed manager, Yashika Patel. She was here at the last meeting to discuss and demonstrate her qualifications. Unfortunately, she was in the hospital today due to some medical issues, and although she is home now and may be joining us if there are some essential questions, I'd like to ask the board's permission to have Mr. Patel stand in if there's any directly relevant questions.
Without objection. And with best wishes for a speedy recovery for your, for your partner.
If it pleases the board, I will request that you incorporate by reference the previous testimony so we don't do the same thing again tonight. I'll be glad to sort of summarize what we had, make some new points, and then we're certainly glad to answer any questions or engage in any dialogue with the board or any community members.
Thank you, that'll be fine.
Okay. So as we mentioned, the character and fitness of this applicant is strong. The proposed manager is a college graduate. She is TIPS trained. She lives one town over in Cambridge. She has five years' experience in ID checking and adult use, running a smoke shop where they sell higher-end products. She is a Mass citizen. She has a clean record. This is a family business. It is owned by the Patel family. It is capitalized by the Patel family, and they have been approved in both Boston and Tewksbury to hold liquor licenses just this year already. The, as well as TIPS training, all the staff will be trained, and they have a program at their other stores where they have up to 30 different closed-circuit cameras, both inside and outside. And depending on town regulations and their discussion with the police department, should they be granted a license, they would put in that same security system and would be willing to share that with the police department, as they do in Boston. Should there be an incident inside or should there be a different kind of incident, even not involving them outside, they routinely interact with the police and let them have access to those videos. We also believe there is a public need for a license at this location. This is a storefront that has been empty for two years. It has been retail for almost, over a generation. We are proposing a boutique wine store featuring craft beers, premium wines. It will be clean. It will be well-lit. It will have higher-quality products. What they want to do is have wine tasting, wine education, and wine pairing, which both engages the community, draws a higher-end clientele, and also drives sales as part of the business model. Well, we have described a little bit of the higher-end products, and some of them are described by name in the brochure we gave you. I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we don't have. We don't have single-serve bottles, formerly known as NIPs. We don't have kegs. We don't have malt liquor. We don't have lottery. We don't have cigarettes, and we don't have candy. So we don't have typical lower-end products, and we don't have products that appeal to children or more casual users and buyers of alcohol. Further supplementing the public want are the 85 signatures in support on a letter that we have submitted. We also have two letters from the abutting businesses. That's the Venice Italian Kitchen and the Novita Salon. There's four slots in that block, as you probably know. One is the post office, and I believe the landlords have spoken to them, and they are supportive, but because they're federal employees, they wouldn't sign any letters. But the other two are in favor. That also goes, we believe, to the timing where the post office and the salon do most of their business between 9:00 and 4:00, where liquor store is typically early evening or Saturday afternoons. So in terms of sort of the burden of traffic, both foot and automotive, we believe that's a nice balance on that block. The woman that helped us collect the signatures from the neighbors and residents, I'm going to submit an affidavit from her about her process of collection, but I'll summarize. As she was out there, she stayed mostly on the block where the store is, just talking to people who were neighbors or nearby shoppers. And while she was basically describing the concept and asking them to sign a letter of support, a lot of them had various comments. So in order to strengthen the business and the business model, you know, we always engage the stakeholders and, you know, the owner learns from that process. But it was interesting that so many people had comments about it, including request for service of kombucha, request for a large variety of cocktail mixers, request for Fever Tree cocktail mixers, request for Esme Gin, request that the store be dog-friendly, request to carry poppy sparkling soda, and request that employees give guidance and suggestions on products. This person mentioned that the store down the street isn't a place to go if you want to try something new because of the lack of consultation. So those are anecdotes from our outreach to the community, but I believe what this says is, not only is there a strong current of support, there's enthusiasm and suggestions about how a high-end boutique store could operate and a level of interest and excitement from the people who are just walking down the street in that area. We've been asked to address parking and traffic. Parking is the same on that block as it always has been. It was formerly a grocery store, formerly a dry cleaner. As you know, retail is typically clustered in strips on Mass Ave, and it's really no different there than anywhere else. We believe that the police do a good job with traffic and parking and pedestrian safety, and that a store going into a place where there's always been a store should not have any significant impact. We would also like to point out that there's been some concern about the proximity of other stores. Again, we believe this boutique wine store is significantly different than the Mass Ave Wine Store, and it's also on another end of the strip that we believe can certainly support the business, much like many other businesses are clustered together on retail strips up and down Mass Ave. Our store is a little more like the Monotomy Beer and Wine Store in terms of the approach, the product mix, and the quality than the Mass Ave Liquor Store. And I thought it was worth noting that the, in terms of the public need and the density of liquor stores, that Monotomy Wine Store is now closed. And not only is it closed, it is fenced off, and it appears that the building is about to be razed and replaced with another building. So the chances that that is even going to exist in the next year and a half, I think, are relatively slim. I think that contention is bolstered by the fact that they are posted with the wholesalers' database. The wholesalers of alcohol maintain a database of all licensees, and if you don't pay, they put you on the list, which is called posting, and it impacts your ability to get product from all of the wholesalers, not just the ones that you're posted by. They are currently posted by six different distributors to whom they owe money, and while we weren't able to determine all of the exact amounts, it appears to be over $10,000, I would say at least. Further, a brief check of the Secretary of State's UCC lien database indicates that they have some liens against the business. So I have shopped there. They had some fine products. They're well-regarded, but the fact that they are closed, the site is fenced off, the building is going to be destroyed, and they appear to have some debt on the business indicates to me that there's a public need for a boutique wine store of that type, which I believe there would be even if we were competing with them, but the fact that they're not there further supports that contention. So with that, I will submit the affidavit and copies of the letters from the abutting businesses, and we're certainly glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. So a question on the affidavit, is this, do we have this submitted prior? Is this, we're just getting it now?
You're just getting it now. It came to me today.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
As did the additional 35 letters, which I submitted.
Ms. Mar, would you go to make copies for each other? Thank you, Attorney Heim. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, I want to open the public comment portion of this hearing, and so since I just sent Ms. Mar on errand, let's start with people in the room. And if you are attending on Zoom and you want to make public comments on the record for the purposes of this hearing, when I announce Zoom participants, be prepared to raise your hand in Zoom, and then we will call on you. So let's just start, though, with people in the room. So at this time, just we have one microphone and one table. If I could indulge, indulge the temporary vacating of the limited real estate there, with your understanding. Thank you. Hadn't, we hadn't anticipated that practical reality. Thank you, sir. We will welcome you back after, after the public comment. Is there anyone in the, in the room that wants us to make a comment? Sure, please, coming up. Welcome back. Thank you for your understanding of the circumstances. We're happy to see you again. Just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for listening to us tonight. My name is Lisa Cronin. I am the landlord for 232 Mass Ave. While I feel it's really important to speak to you all tonight, I'm not a great public speaker, so I prepared just, over the last 50 years, since the early 1970s, a member of my family has managed the property of stores in East Arlington that spans 232 to 242 Mass Ave. I took that over sole management in 1999. Across the units, we manage, there has been a post office pizza store and a dry cleaners for most of the years. If we still had it our way, we would, we would never have lost the dry cleaners located that previously occupied the now vacant unit, the way we did two summers ago during COVID-19. We were able to work with all the other tenants to keep them in business, but despite our efforts, the owners of, owner of the dry cleaner made the difficult decision to close his doors due to the unprecedented times and declining business, dry cleaning business. Between my full-time job as a registered nurse and my job as a single mom to my three sons, I've always valued positive businesses, businesses doing the right thing versus looking to make an extra dollar charging rent. Since we lost the dry cleaners, we have invested a large sum of money, of which most was borrowed to work to replenish the vacant unit to one worthy of another business to serve the town of Arlington. That being said, despite two years of marketing the property, close to $100,000 in lost rent and renovations, we have left one potential tenant that we believe to be worthy of the property for discussion today. That is the liquor store seeking your approval this evening. Our interests have always been aligned with the community, and I felt compelled to address the community this evening to reiterate this fact, in which I feel to be so confident every single time I think of East Arlington. I'm an Arlington Catholic alum, born and bred here. I implore you to understand the opportunity we have before us this evening to replace a vacant property with potential tenants we have worked with for almost a year. These are the best tenants we have found, and we think we will find to fill that empty spot. The opportunity being put forth this evening is one in which is truly so rare in the post-COVID I'm going to allow, we've, we hired, in the last two years, we hired a broker. I'm going to allow her to speak. If, I'm not sure if she can speak now or you had to let other people speak. She's, yeah, she's in the Zoom time. Her name is Suzanne. A chance to address the group in a moment, but I really hope that there's no misunderstanding to the sincerity and importance in which this decision should be held for those that don't agree. I want what is best for Arlington. I look forward to us continuing to thrive together and hopefully welcoming our new best business owners to accompany us forward for the decades to come. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. And I neglected to mention, you actually hit three minutes exactly, so I'll treat everyone the same, and from here on out, we'll do a three-minute time limit on public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't set one, so you, you just set, you set the time, and it was perfect, so. That was, we're glad, glad to hear from you, and that was my fault for not saying ahead of time, but three minutes it is. You mentioned, was it Suzanne Conway?
Yes.
So I'm very happy as a courtesy to, to bring her on next from Zoom. So Ms. Mar will promote Ms. Conway to be able to turn off or to enable her microphone and camera if desired. Good evening, Suzanne.
Hi. How are you?
Very well. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Suzanne Conway. I work at Cabinet and Company Real Estate on Newbury Street in Boston. I represent the property on Mass Ave, and I've been showing the property for over, whoops, let me turn on my camera. Sorry about that. I've been showing the property for over a year now, and by far, you know, this applicant, the Patel family, I think is the strongest candidate that we've had. They've been one of the few that actually have previous business experience, and they own, as Andrew has mentioned, they own several different businesses throughout the area. They're also a local family, you know, in Cambridge, and I think it's nice to have somebody local in that space. Also, it sounds like they, you know, they've really reached out to the community and have listened to what the surrounding people would like in the store. It does, it's definitely distinguished, you know, from the other liquor stores, being more of a, a wine, something high-end wine and doing tasting, which does, it's, it's kind of a nice community event that they can, they can offer in the area as well. And also, I think it's just, it's nice to fill that space because it has been empty for so long, and that will really help, you know, uplift the property values in the area. So I just want to offer my experience, you know, showing the space and just different people that have come and see it and just how strong I think the Patel family is, and will do a really nice job with their build-out in that space. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll now turn to anyone in the room who'd like to make public comment? Mr. Fiore? Thank you very much. Thank you again for your understanding.
Did you say that we only have three minutes?
Right.
Could these, could this young woman sit down and stand behind me? Is that all right?
Yeah, we, yeah, would you mind? Thank you.
Okay, I didn't know I only have three minutes, and I talk fast anyway, so just, give me a minute while I...
Yeah, I won't start the clock till you begin.
I edit what I've already edited. You don't have a clock here, though, do you?
No, but I'll, I'll give you a little heads up when we're... No, but I'll, I'll give you a little heads up when we're about 30 seconds in.
I'd like to thank the members of the Arlington Select Board for giving me this opportunity to speak for the record. These applicants and their attorney have created a public record of inconsistencies and misrepresentations in three communities over the past six months. The applicant's brochure misrepresents who owns 232 Mass Ave. It's owned by the Dioria Family Realty Trust and not the Cronins. The applicant's so-called letters of support are a misrepresentation of a petition. The applicant's pages in support of their package through a simple petition of 48 signatures on 48 separate pages of paper. In contrast to the letters of concern written by residents, not even one petition presents one original thought. At the last select board meeting, Mr. Upton, when he's comparing store hours, said that the package store hours would not conflict with the East Arlington post office on Saturday because the post office was only open on Saturday morning. The East Arlington post office is only open Monday through Friday. It does not have Saturday hours. He's prone to misrepresentation when it isn't even necessary. I was surprised by the quote on page eight in their brochure, which states they look forward to working with the community to establish a safe, friendly community store without negative impacts on the neighborhood. We value our relationship with the neighborhood and the community. They write that, but the reality is that they never met with the neighbors and abutters to attempt to address legitimate neighborhood concerns. In what is an act of disrespect and contempt, they responded by gathering signatures to overwhelm and drown out contrary voices. No doubt, this is the shape of things to come. Why is their sister-in-law, Palak Patel, not here in Arlington? I know she lives in Minneola, New York State, and so will be an absentee package store owner, but it would seem reasonable to expect her to present herself to ask for the license, answer questions from the board, and introduce herself to the community. On Sunday, June 25th, I decided to drive out to Ware to see the smoke shop the brochure says is owned by Yakeisha Patel. There I found this. No city smoke shop, only a sign above an empty storefront. City smoke shop does not exist and has never existed. It only exists on paper. The applicants misrepresented in their brochure that they own a business that isn't in business. Deciding I needed to go the distance, I drove from Ware to 345 Main Street in Tewksbury. There I found this. Another empty storefront. There is no city wine spirits and smoke shop. It doesn't exist. It only exists on paper. The applicants misrepresented in, in their brochure that they own two businesses that aren't now in business that have never been in business. I decided to watch the video recording of the Tewksbury Select Board meeting from January 10th, 2023, when that board did in fact approve a package store license transfer for these applicants. At the hearing, the applicants assured the Tewksbury Select Board that they were moving to Middleton. They have assured the Arlington Select Board that they live in Cambridge. Where do they live? Which board has been misled? In response to concerns expressed by the Tewksbury.
Is it a matter of object now, or must I wait till this, these lawsuits are completed?
Sir, you will be given an opportunity to respond at the conclusion of the public comment period. And I'll give a little bit more time to Mr. Fiore. If you'd wrap it up in 30 seconds, sir.
In response to concerns expressed by the Tewksbury Select Board about problems they've had with smoke shops and its package stores in that town, Yakeisha Patel assured them she would be hands-on in micromanaging. On her Tewksbury application, she wrote in the box for hours that she would be on premises that is 40-plus. At the last meeting of the Arlington Select Board, Yakeisha Patel assured the board that she would be managing the store in Arlington full-time. On the Arlington application, she wrote in the box for hours she'd be on premises 40-plus.
I'm, I'm very sorry. If you could summarize and wind it down, please. I, I would be very happy for you, at the conclusion of your remarks, to give a copy of these to Ms. Mar, and she could put a copy of those, and they can be.
Okay, I'll, just, let me have a few more seconds, then I'll wrap it up.
Okay, please do, yeah.
I'm certain she cannot be in these two places hands-on and micromanaging full-time at the same time, as well as your smoke shop in Ware, her commercial business, and their smoke shops in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island. I'd like to leave, I'd like to leave the board with this thought. East Arlington has a great variety of businesses, shops, services, restaurants, and experiences. Within that variety, there is a balance. East Arlington has two package stores and two ice cream stores. A parent can bring their child to one of two ice cream stores for ice cream, or they can go to one or two package stores for alcohol. Please don't let these applicants upset that balance. Please don't let these applicants turn East Arlington into a neighborhood where the package stores outnumber the ice cream stores. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. And if you, if you don't, if you'd like, you can hand a copy of your remarks to Ms. Mar, and they can.
Sure.
Into the, into the record. We'll continue the public, public hearing now. All right. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comment? Please raise your hand, and we see Walt Fay. Bye. Thank you, Mr. De Corsi. So Mr. Fay is coming in. Good evening, Mr. Fay. You are able now to, yes, there you go. Can you hear us?
There we go. Hi, there.
Three minutes, sir.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm a neighbor. I've met a businessman in East Arlington for 20 years or more. And I, I am opposed to the granting of this license for a liquor store, basically because there's another liquor store three, maybe four blocks away. And I don't really see how this adds to the neighborhood. I don't think it enhances or keeps the harmony of the businesses in the neighborhood. One of the things that the applicant stated or was that they had a couple of local businesses nearby that were interested, that were for it. And I want to make a point that this is, this location is kind of in what is called the Capital District, which is, you know, the shops around the Capitol Theater. And I didn't see anything from, any support from any of the other businesses in the neighborhood that they thought that this was a good idea. And I wanted to bring that to the attention of this select board. Certainly have sympathy for the landlord and trying to rent that space, commercial space right now. It's tough all over. And I just don't, I don't, don't see how adding another liquor store on Mass Ave right close by to another liquor store is going to enhance the, the quality of the neighborhood here. One other thing I'd like to say about wine tastings in general is that other liquor stores and wine stores do offer them. My experience of them having attended a few is that they tend to become a very, they, they start out good, but they don't really seem to last and, and drive traffic so much. So I would look to, you know, where, where is the revenue from this store coming from? Which would typically be the sales of beer, wine, and alcohol and spirits. And again, we've got another place right down the street that offers all of that and would be in direct competition with this, with this other existing business. So for that reason, I'm opposed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anybody, we tend to bounce back and forth for public comment. Anybody else in the room who would like to make public comment for this hearing? All right. Anybody else on Zoom? Oh, do we have, we have a?
Oh, could I just?
Oh, yeah, of course you may, yeah. Yeah, please, you can. Please, yeah, introduce yourself for the record, please.
I'm Ryan Cronin. I'm Lisa Cronin, the landlord, the person who manages the block of stores right there, son. I just wanted to emphasize some points that were said by my mom, as well as Suzanne, who we've been working with, and the fact that we have been working on this for two years now. We've put a lot of time, a lot of money into the store that we don't really have a lot of either of those right now to get someone in there. And we've had the potential to put some other companies in there that we didn't really think were good for the town of Arlington. And we decided to move forward and to continue taking the hit, to continue to make sure we found a really solid tenant. And I think that that's what we've done right now. We've been working with Nalash and Yashica for almost a year right now to try to make sure that we have everything in order to come before you, to make sure that we've heard the community. And we think that they're the best tenants. We haven't heard from anyone else in the last few months since we've been working with them. There were people originally who we were like, no, we're working, we're moving forward with these, these potential tenants. And at this point, I think that the best, the best chance of having a store in there and having a, filling this vacancy is to move forward with Nalash and Yashica. And I mean, we receive letters from the town of Arlington all the time about it being vacant right now and asking why it's vacant and wanting to charge us money for it. And I don't, like, this is what we think is best for the town of Arlington, is to put them in there. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the room before I turn back to Zoom? Thank you, Mr. Diggins. All right. Is there anybody else in Zoom who would like to contribute? We have a raising name by Susanna Frichera. Give a moment for bringing that person into Zoom. And at this point, Susanna, you should be able to turn on your camera and microphone and unmute yourself. Good evening. All right, three minutes, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go right ahead. Three minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. I've owned a condo at 230 Mass Avenue for 36 years. I'm reading this this time. My husband and I are strongly opposed to this proposal. First of all, there are already two stores selling alcohol and he's telling it, and you've noticed. Mass Ave Wine and Spirits is at 137 Mass Avenue. That's, you know, within the Capitol Square blocks right here and very, very close. And our neighborhood has a lot of shops, restaurants, a movie theater. Walk around the stretch of Mass Avenue on a Saturday, Sunday, there are lots of families, the small children. Number two, the narrow driveway into our parking lot for our condo building directly abuts the store in question. As it was, when that storefront was a dry cleaner, we had numerous issues with the clients. Walking our driveway, parking their cars in our driveway, while people went and out. And they closed at 5:00. The package stores indicated a closing time of 11:00 P.M. Plus, the lights must have affected residences late hour as well. Third, and more importantly, and more serious issues, that this address at the corner of Mass Avenue or West Street is known to be dangerous, not only for drivers, but even more so for pedestrians. 10 years ago, a woman walking across Mass Avenue there and in the crosswalk was killed by a driver. At that time, it was noted that this particular crosswalk was the longest in the area without traffic signals, which are still not in that place, the location. The petitioners indicate they have a large number of positive votes from our Arlington residents. If you look closer, however, it's a single, short, generic, biased letter that people just have signed by petitioners as they walked by the store. A number of those who signed the letter live a significant distance away. They live as far as four or more miles away from our neighborhood. They're not abutters or close neighbors. Their decisions to support this establishment will have no impact on their daily lives. Also, Monodyne was closed because the building is being torn down because the, the owners want to build a new building with apartments and retail. So they had to close. I don't know anything else about that. But let me just say, most of us living next door, who are very close to this place, won't have the luxury that those other people who've signed that letter, we don't have that luxury to be so detached from this issue. It certainly will impact our way of life in East Arlington and in a negative way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there further members of the public attending on Zoom who would like to comment? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, seeing none. One last chance for anybody else in the room. All right, this will end the period of public comment. I'd like invite the attorney and the applicant back up, and we'll give them a moment to get settled again. Thank you for your flexibility on, on our limited room logistics here. Take your time.
I appreciate everyone's comments.
Yeah, and I will, just as a matter of form, before I turn to the board, I will give you the opportunity, I promise, to, to make any further comments or responses to the public.
Okay. Yeah, we, we appreciate the input from the neighbors and stakeholders. Just a few brief clarification points. I mean, I, it does seem a little bit unfair to characterize 85 people who took the time to stop in front of the, in front of the location, support the store, discuss the store as people that don't have a right to an opinion, that people are not, you know, neighbors who are close enough. I mean, you, you can look through the addresses yourself. There are some from right there, from, from right across the street, some from nearby streets, some from other parts of town. You know, that's the nature of retail. You don't serve only the people on your block. You, you serve the whole town and maybe even people from other towns. Secondly, the idea that this is going to cause light pollution shining into the building seems unlikely as the lights face the street. And we have already agreed that we will not be having the sort of plastered signs and neon beer signs of the lower-end liquor stores. So I, I, I think hopefully that should not be a concern. We do have an additional affidavit from one of our consultants who spoke to Lieutenant Gallagher of the Police Department, who said there have been no calls regarding traffic or parking issues at the proposed location in the last two years. Apparently, there was a traffic stop outside the proposed location and a false 911 call that was reported and placed from that address at the time the store was closed. So for what it's worth, the Police Department does not seem especially concerned with the traffic issues right there. As Mr. Fay, he was critical that we got support from only two neighboring stores, but not any others. And I would have liked to have every store support us, but I do note that zero stores opposed us and two are in favor. So on balance, I see that as a positive. Mr. Patel and any liquor store or anyone in the wine or liquor business that can tell you that wine tastings are an essential driver of wine sales. When you go to the wine store, or at least when I go to the wine store, there's 100 kinds of red and 100 kinds of white, unless you're a big expert, it's kind of hard to tell what's going on. That is why wine tastings are so important. And the idea that they sort of fade away over time, I think is without foundation and apparently without expertise from Mr. Fay. As to Mr. Fiore and his cherry-picking of our various businesses, first of all, we have 87 signatures in support now, just so the total is clear. Second of all, the Tewksbury store, the Boston store, and the Ware store are all currently approved and in permitting. So to say that those businesses don't exist is false. I mean, in where he owns the building and the permits are at the building department, in Boston, the liquor license is approved. In Tewksbury, the liquor license is approved. We did not say these are stores that are up and running and selling cans of Bud Light. We said they have been approved because those towns deemed the character and fitness of the applicant to be strong and the public need for a license at the location to be strong. The fact that one of the co-owners, their sister-in-law, who's providing some of the, the funds, lives in another state does not make this not a family business. It's not, you know, they're not owned by a corporation in another state or country. This is their sister-in-law, Palak Patel. So those are our rebuttals to those points at this point. And I would, I would like to mention that based on the address that Mr. Fiore gave, he's, he's over a half-mile away. So I don't know that he'd be considered a neighbor or a butter either.
Very much. All right. Thank you. And if you would just say at the table, then at this point, I'll invite, turn to each board member and invite questions. My suggestion would be maybe a round of questions and answers, and then followed by perhaps a fresh round of just, of just board-only discussion with any motions. If that's acceptable to the board? Mr. Ruth?
I just had comments. I don't necessarily have any questions.
Okay, sure. We'll go for any, any members with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coming again this evening. I, I have a few questions. And, and I, I, my memory of what Attorney Upton said at the last meeting was that the approval was granted in the other communities, not necessarily that the stores were open as well. And I know Tewksbury, there may have been an issue with the ABCC because of the lease that you have at the Tewksbury store that, that got sent back to the Board of Selectmen in Tewksbury because the units that you'll be occupying was incorrect in the lease. And it sounds like that's probably why you were delayed. But I know, I know that has been approved. There is one thing from that application that I do have a question that does pertain to Arlington, and, and Mr. Fiore did bring that up, is, is just your wife designation as a manager at both locations. And typically, what we've seen is that if you have a manager, you might have one manager at each site because of the time intensity that's required. at each site because of the time intensity that's required. And I have the Tewksbury application here with me, and Yashika Patel is listed as a manager, just same way as the revised. And I'm wondering, is there going to be a change to either one? Because it does seem unlikely that she'll be able to manage both, if approved.
That is an excellent question, and that is one of the few technical points on which Mr. Fiore may be correct. The ABCC requires, as part of the application, that you have a manager of record, and they require that manager to say that they're going to be on premises 35 hours or more per week. Typically, what applicants, whether they're liquor stores, or restaurants, or anyone else, you can't hire a manager four months before you open, because no one would take the job, and you wouldn't want to pay them for that. So you have to have an owner as sort of the placeholder manager, who will oversee construction and the opening. Once that happens, they will very likely hire a general manager, who will then take the, eventually take the title of manager of record, and we would come here and file a change of manager application.
Okay, and a bit of potential conflict there. I want to go back, and I have a few questions, and I want to get into some of the factors as well, but just on what we have now through the revised application, I want to actually walk through what we had at the beginning. And maybe before I do that, just, we had some discussions about plans and the importance of plans and how we look at things. And as part of our application process, as you know, we state that every application must include certain information on a clear and accurate scale drawing. But we also have in our rules and regulations that the store layout shall not be changed without the submission of an amended floor plan to the board and the board's written approval. And so, I'd ask Ms. Mar, if we go to the original application, and I believe it's page 13 of that application. I'm sorry for the delay, but I think this...
Oh, no, that's fine. Take your time. This is important.
Some clarification. Or might be the initial application itself, Ms. Mar.
I'm sorry, the page?
I believe it's page 13. No problem.
Fine.
Okay, yeah, and you may have to do type. So this was the initial plan that was submitted. I believe it was produced in February. And if you increased, and you go over to the right corner, upper right, keep going all the way over to the right, to the legend, okay. So this is, the project is a smoke shop and retail fed-up, and within the floor plan, there's a humidor, which we had discussion about that at the last meeting. So if you don't mind going over to the left, Ms. Mar, you can see the humidor there. But you also see along the left side, designated by A, is a series of glass cases, which I understand is consistent with the smoke shop-type setup. And there's a number of other shelving. Now, this revised application that you submitted to us last week, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is the only two changes to that is that smoke shop was whited out in the far right on the legend, and humidor was changed to storage. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. And the glass cases remain, and that the setup remains. And you said to us last time, when you came before us, that you heard from the community, and you're changing the format around. And if I could ask Ms. Mar, and I know this is asking you a lot, but you also presented a floor plan, different floor plan, last time. It seems now you're back to the original smoke shop, retail fed-up floor plan. And bear in mind, once you ask us to approve something, if you want to change it, you've got to come back to us. And so that's the revised. If you go to the package, I'll hold it up, because it's, it's, this... That was the June one, yeah, page seven and eight. I think you might have done that.
Did I do that?
I apologize for this, but it's just, I don't know if you can do this.
It's fine, it's all rushed.
Okay, here it is here, if you can enlarge that. Okay, and this was the basis for coming back. We said we have a different floor plan, and we want to consider other things. Now, this is all wine and spirits and beer sales. And I'm just wondering what the thought process was going back to the initial smoke shop, retail fed-up plan, when you came to us and said, "We heard from the, from the Board of Health, we're not going to do a smoke shop. Here's what we have." This seems to be consistent with just a package store as opposed to future use as a smoke shop. I'm just asking, why not this one in the revised application? Why go back to the one? I don't see much of a use for glass cases in the, in the wine and beer-type sales situation.
Right. Well, the, we discussed this with the architect and the designer. And the build-out, should the board grant a license, is estimated to cost between $3,000 and $400,000. So before we engage an architect and their outrageous fees, and order materials, and fit it out and design it, we want to show you what our plan is. Should the architect say, "You can't have four of these rows, you can't have the glass cases, refrigeration can't connect to this side," we would have to work with you and the Buildings Department to make a change. Mr. Patel told me that the glass cases could be repurposed for the better quality wines, so we left them in.
More like wine cellars. They'll be displayed as wine cellars, instead of just glass shelving.
And the storage, obviously, now will be likely, possibly refrigerated, but no longer dehumidified.
And just for what was brought before us in June, and you don't have to go back, if I can hold it up, I don't know if that was your own drawing, or if you went to another...
No, so this is a non-architect drawing. That was just hand-sketched.
Okay.
This is NFP-scanned, based off the exact measurement of the space. So what we actually put it in here is the actual measurements. Now, we can't go in front of the Building Department until we actually have stamped drawings in front of you guys, as well as the Building Department. So I needed more accuracy on just overall floor layout. That will get adjusted, once we actually submit the building permit and application. They'll say, "This cannot be here, or that cannot be here, or sprinkler head abuts this, or the fire alarm system doesn't have a narrative, or the sprinkler system." All these little adjustments happen before they give us a building permit. And that building permit gives us the power to go ahead and do a build-out. So the adjustments on the plan will continuously happen until the Building Department decides to give, Building Department decides to give us a permit based off narrative for the fire department, narrative for the fire system, narrative for the sprinkler system, narrative for the walking cooler, the framework, the insulation, lighting, and the equipment that goes in, all these things will be part of the build-out process before we get issued a permit. So this is, again, it's a preliminary drawing. It can't be finalized, even if we want, because we have to go in front of the Building Department before they can issue us a permit.
Yeah, and actually, and we can get into this when we have comments, and there's been a whole discussion here within, not a discussion, but just from the memos that we've gotten from town department heads, a building inspector in particular, talking about the timing. Did you go to the Building Department first, and then come to us afterwards? So I'll, I'll reserve comments on the differences here.
So just one thing.
I will, yeah, go ahead.
One thing. And I have never seen a business go in front of a Building Department without having a permit ready to be applied to. So for instance, you wouldn't build a business without having a permit. So therefore, we wouldn't be able to go to a Building Permit, Building Department to get a building permit if we don't have a physical permit to operate that business. So the idea of this is for us to be able to get a permit approved under the condition, conditions of getting Building Department approval. Once you get the Building Department approval, then we'll be able to move forward and do a build-out.
And now...
I'm trying, Mr. Chairman.
Please, sir.
I was just going to say, I mean, to be clear, we're happy to work with any of the board's concerns about the layout. We're happy with the public safety, with the Building Department. But we were directed to apply with a clear and accurate scale drawing, that's the net floor area, the rooms, the storage rooms, the entrances, and the doors and windows. I mean, there's, we added actually more detail, and we're certainly glad to discuss it, but the requirements of the application only ask for those things. They don't ask for the shelving and the glass and that stuff. And, you know, typically, that does change based on availability or Building Department issues, and sometimes cost.
Okay. And on this drawing here, and again, this may be down the road, but where's the cashier? Or where would you, in this setup, where would the cash register be located?
It would be on the left side, where the glass shelving is considered. Usually, your ID scanning system has to be at the entrance, or where the customers can have an egress in and out. So right at the entrance, if you don't mind me getting up. Customers walk in, they can walk around the shop, as they cash out, the register system runs, and then they leave. Also, depending on the egress situation. But again, all these things will be determined when we go in front of a Building Department, because they'll say, "No, you need another exit because of egress being an issue, or you need more space, less furniture, because handicap accessibility." So all these things will determine once we actually go into the Building Department.
Okay. If I, if I may, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm monopolizing the time here, but I got a couple of other questions. And Attorney Upton, you mentioned the various factors, and the Ballerin case, if I'm pronouncing that properly, talked about the factors that you look at with a liquor license.
Yeah, I was actually going off Attorney Heim's memo.
Yeah, which cited the Ballerin.
Very well valid.
Yeah. And as I look at that, I mean, the two that really concern me and want to ask you about is traffic and the number of, the number of other stores in the area. But as far as traffic is concerned, and that goes to, and one other thing as well, which, within our regulations, we do talk about that the issuance of a package store license will contribute to the town's development in the following respects, providing convenient and attractive parking options. And I think you can see that there really are convenient and attractive parking options in this area, and you hope that things change based on what's in the memo here. But part of traffic is, or considerations, will be what happens when you get deliveries, and how that's going to impact traffic. And I'm just wondering, how would deliveries be made to the store after it's open, and where would, where would delivery, the delivery trucks park?
Liquor company, liquor industry as a whole, majority of the delivery companies deliver before or during, before or during around the noon hours. So 9:00 a.m. to noon, that's usually your delivery timeframe. During the time, that timeframe, again, based off the egress, it could be decided where the delivery companies can actually deliver. Also, part of, you know, landlord discretion, as well as the city's discretion of where and how we can do delivery systems. But it's never been the case for majority of the companies. They never actually had issues. Community stores get the same companies, HLA, J. Polup, use the same trucking systems. Liquor companies, same thing. They have the same trucking system, usually use a rate liner that does deliveries for majority of the liquor companies.
Liquor companies typically use box trucks.
Yeah.
As opposed to perhaps when the supermarket was there, and they used semi-trucks. I mean, a liquor store will have probably 20% to 25% of the SKUs that a small supermarket would have. So the deliveries would actually be fewer than they had been historically.
And usually, again, wine companies, you don't really often buy wine on a weekly basis. The products that you buy on a weekly basis more is beer, because of expiration dates, you can't store. Again, the space is not that large, so you're not storing huge amounts. But wine and liquor, you buy every two weeks, maybe every three weeks. So it's not a lot of traffic. Again, community store items, you need a weekly refurbishment because of, you know, short expiration dates. The only expiration dates here are more on the beer side.
Okay. Just one more question, Mr. Chairman. And this has to do, on the revised application, I see the notice of lease that is, that was attached, that was signed back in February. Has there been any amendment to that? The signed lease proposal, the lease proposal from Conway Real Estate, and it was signed by Mr. Patel, but that was signed back in February, and it contemplated some things. Is that still what's in effect, or do you actually have a lease agreement now?
No, no.
It's a letter of intent.
It's a letter of intent.
Okay. And one of the things in there, maybe for both of you, and again, we're not the Zoning Board of Appeals, we don't deal with zoning, but there are definitely zoning issues with this property being in the R6 zone. Within the liquor license application, it was contemplated that you'd submit an application for a special permit, and then once you got the special permit, you'd come to the board here for a liquor license. And to my understanding, talking to the building inspector, I don't think there's been any contact with the building inspector, or with the ZBA, or anything filed with them today, is that right? I have a question for you, Mr. Patel, and for the...
No, that's correct.
Okay, all right. I don't have anything further right now, and I'm sorry for the amount of time that it took.
It was all productive time.
Mrs. Mahon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey.
But may, before we start, may I just point one thing out?
Sure.
The Building Department said they have no objection to the issues of this license. Provisions of the zoning bylaw may apply. So, I mean, our approach is to, if we get the license, obviously, it would be conditioned either by you or automatically on any zoning belief. So it wouldn't, nothing can happen until they sign off one way or another.
Mrs. Mahon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. I've been trying to sit and not keep asking all the questions all the time, so you cleared about 50% of my on-deck questions. So I guess I'll sort of piggyback from where you left off there, which is that I don't know if this is appropriate to the applicant necessarily, or to the chair, through the chair, to Attorney Heim. I just want to make sure my procedural mind is running correct, as Mr. DeCoursey pointed out, that this applicant will have to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals, because I believe it's in R6, and the residential and minimal business use allowed by R6, this proposed business does not comply with that. And I know you're not ZBA, but am I close to correct on that, if that's all right, Mr.?
Of course.
Mr. Turnhead?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mrs. Mahon. I think there would have to be a zoning determination made by the building inspector in his capacity as a zoning enforcement officer, as to what exactly would be required, whether this should be treated as a prior non-conforming use, or whether it would require a special permit. The board has discretion to grant a license contingent upon obtaining that kind of relief. The board has discretion to consider that as part of its overall decision-making process. Is that a suspicion?
Then, am I correct that, I'm just trying to, this is just a little bit different than some of the other, all of the other alcohol package store requests that I've heard, and I've been here forever. God bless you all. Also, in concert with that, am I correct that the applicant also has to, because of environmental, environmental concerns, environmental design review concerns, also has to go before the Arlington Redevelopment Board?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Mahon, it's a good question. Typically, if a special permit is required on Massachusetts Ave, that would go before the Arlington Redevelopment Board instead of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's important to note that there are some special permits that were historically granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and so they continue to hear permits that they sort of own historically. If it is a matter of prior non-conformance, according to the zoning enforcement officer, and I'm not offering that opinion, I'm just saying that it's up to the zoning enforcement officer, that wouldn't necessarily go to the ARB itself, though certain aspects might have to go to the ARB with respect to, for example, signage, based on the environmental design review criteria. Just to be clear for everybody involved, environmental design review is more or less a more thorough version of the zoning analysis for any special permit than the Zoning Board of Appeals, which typically handles more residential zoning matters. So some of the things that we're talking about are, receive a little bit more attention from the ARB than they do with the ZBA.
And the reason, one of the reasons I raise this is, our building commissioner has provided us that if this board issues this license and or when, it does say directly in there that this, our approval cannot be used for intended use for approval before both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Redevelopment Board. So to me, that indicates... So to me, that indicates those are two other boxes that need to be checked. And the only reason I raise this, and I could be concerned about something I shouldn't be concerned about, but especially around, I know there's environmental design review, but then there's also environmental concerns. And I know previously where there was a dry cleaning establishment, that when another business went in there, there was something, when they went through a review process, not a design review, but it may have come up. Just the nature of the dry cleaning business really kicked in some environmental costs that weren't included. So that's not anything that this board can necessarily weigh in on. And I'm not going to ask Attorney Heim who he thinks would have to bear those costs, whether it's the, did you want to add something to that? If that's all right, Mr. Chairman?
If I may. Thank you, Mrs. Mahon. I thought, I think that there might be one thing that would be help just to the board in its consideration, because as Mrs. Mahon's pointed out, this isn't a typical situation. Most of our package stores, to my recollection, have gone into spaces that were already zoned for commercial explicitly in the bylaw. The way I would look at it is similar to the way your host community agreements work. You know, you were responsible for essentially deciding who was going to get a host community agreement under the criteria of that process. But that didn't entitle them to the relief that was necessary to open. They still had to go through a process to get a special permit under the zoning bylaw. So it's very much similar to that, and I'm glad that you raised that, because it's a good way of thinking about that, with the one perhaps difference being that there's a little bit more allowance for some zoning consideration in the criteria that I've sort of alluded to here.
And one last procedural question, just if this comes up in the future. I'm of the opinion that when we're receiving applications like this, and unfortunately for the applicant and/or the owner, it's a two or three board commission involvement, to me, the natural course seems like, in light of the fact that we need to see as close as we can get to our final floor plans and if there is any environmental design changes, things like that, that we should sort of be the last stop on the train that you all have to go through, and you have to go to three different stops. So what this is making me think is, is it legally, is this something we need to redefine more going forward? That if licenses like this, that involve the zoning board of appeals and/or redevelopment board, as well as the building department, do we need to work on something that sets up an order for the applicant, where the select board, if not the last stop, is closer to the end? And I guess my question would be, it seems to me it's really ambiguous, so it's really, unfortunately, for the applicant to decide where they want to go first, which is usually the building department, and then they go from there. So I guess my question would be to Attorney Heim through the chair is, because I feel the pain of the applicant for this or any other like application, I imagine, I'll just speak for myself, I think the select board should kind of be the last, if not the second to last stop. Or does the law say that's totally up to the purview of the applicant if they have to deal with two, three boards, commissions, et cetera? They can choose where they want to start and go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, in my opinion, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mrs. Mahon. In my opinion, it's, there's not going to be a perfect process that you can outline that's going to cover every circumstance. In this particular circumstance, we know that we consider location and zoning compliance as a factor in the calculus that the board engages in considering something. But I'm responsive to some of the things that the applicants are saying, which is that there's a little bit of a chicken and an egg problem here. And if they had gone to building and the ARB first and sort of gotten a special permit approval for something that you ultimately didn't want to grant them, or you didn't like a certain facet of the layout, they'd then be going back to amend that special permit instead of trying to amend their alcohol license here. So I don't know that I have a perfect answer for that. I do think that our process, generally speaking, has worked very well for us. As you've alluded to, I'm not sure that we've had a prior issue with respect to a pack store applicant not sort of having a clear pathway in terms of zoning. That doesn't mean I'm saying these folks can't get the zoning relief that they would need. I'm just saying that I don't recall previous instances where either a special permit or confirmation of prior non-conforming zoning status was necessary in order to proceed. So long and short of it, I don't think that there is an easy way for us to sort of solve this specific problem, and I think it's a very fair and well-stated perspective that, you know, you understand the bind that they're in, as well as the bind that you're all in, because we have a finite number of package store licenses. It'd be difficult to issue a package store license on one hand, when you're not sure that they're going to get the zoning relief. On the other hand, if they get the zoning relief and then they come in front of you and it's not to your liking and they get denied on the basis of what's been approved by the ARB or what the ARB would like to do, that would present a different kind of difficulty. So again, I think the best way to think about it is very similar to the way that your host community agreement process unfolded. These things are relevant. You're allowed to consider traffic, you're allowed to consider the other businesses, you're allowed to consider proximity, the applicant, there's a lot of criteria that are still pretty much present here. But I think we're going to live with a little bit of ambiguity with respect to having all those ducks lining in a row for zoning relief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And then last two questions to Attorney Upden. So from what you stated, I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, that, and I understand what you have to do sort of procedurally. So the intention is not to have Ms. Patel ultimately be the manager, general manager of the store? It's to get the construction going, and then after that, it'll be a different individual? Did I hear that correctly, or did I hear that incorrectly?
No, I think you heard it correctly. I mean, depending on how long it takes to build, how long it takes to open, how long it takes to get up and running, I would say, I mean, it's her money, it's her life, it's what she wants to do to get these things going. But if ultimately she's in charge of one or two or three, we're going to hire a person who's full-time and change him to the manager, probably in the first or second quarter of opening.
And I only say that because I was very impressed with her when I had the opportunity to speak with her. I'm keeping good prayers for good speedy health and recovery. So part of my decision is also based on the representation of her.
I mean, she's a proposed 50% owner. Her sister-in-law is the other 50% owner, who's more of a silent partner because she lives in another state. So the buck stops with her.
Right. No, no. I mean, in terms of who's going to be in there day-to-day, definitely happy sold on her being there, but it sounds like she's not going to, after the store opens and gets ready.
I wouldn't be too quick to draw that conclusion. She's not going to be there 40 hours a week if we get another manager in the future. But to get it up and running and ultimately to supervise all aspects, she currently supervises all aspects of the cash flow, the bookkeeping, the personnel, the hiring and compliance for their other stores. So that will undoubtedly continue. And as you probably know, in a retail business, if you're not there watching what's going on, it typically doesn't go that well. So she's going to be very, very hands-on.
Since you say that, in my family, it's restaurant, but it also deals with alcohol. And some people know of the chateaus, which are pretty prevalent throughout Massachusetts.
I've been to the chateaus.
You have about 12 choices. And you can also go to Nasser's in Duxbury's, but we won't get there. I know in that family structure that pretty much all the different restaurants have a dedicated manager, they have a general manager, but then similar to the people who are putting the money out and have to see it, they really concentrate on one, two max. And it sounds here, you're talking up to four. So that's yours and a business decision, but that does weigh on me in terms of, because, you know, I take representations from the microphone. And then just lastly, just because Attorney Upden raised the point in terms of your closed circuit camera, is that a continuous 24/7? How long are the tapes retained? And if for some reason, as you spoke about, the police, fire, or any other department in Arlington are in need of that video footage, is that something that the person on site can provide, or is it something, again, where the manager isn't there? And there's a one, two, three, does it tape over? How long do you retain that?
So two things. For the IT department, we own the IT company that manages all our database. We own the server, and the server holds one year worth of database for all our camera systems and all our establishments. Second point, we are a family-owned business, and we micromanage our business. And that's one of the reasons why we have zero violations in any of our businesses across the board. Trust me when I tell you, we watch and see and control our business to the T as best as our ability. Even if my wife is not there, she's there in terms of controlling pricing structure, controlling the compliance with ID checking, controlling the business operations, ordering, receiving, accounts receivables, payables, the list goes on. Our managers are basically the forefront of operation of running the business. But the general manager overseeing the business is always going to be my wife, anyone that, any business that she's operating. So in terms of having a physical body, she's a mother, she's going to take care of her child, she's not going to be there 24/7, but that doesn't mean that she can't own and operate a business. And I will tell you, we have had great success because every one of my businesses ran family-owned, family-operated, and we're very much in control of our business, from the point of sale to IT to marketing to accounts receivables and payables and processing all the orders, and the list goes on, hiring and firing. We don't have a general manager. We manage our managers on a day-to-day basis. Even in our house, we have, in our office, we have cameras that's watching our businesses. We have an IT team that's watching our businesses. I mentioned last time we were here, that we hired a team of guys that basically operate our cameras and watch our establishments, so that way we control the liabilities at best of our abilities. We were going above and beyond in just operations, so couldn't operate better.
And I appreciate that answer, only because years previous, a different establishment that we had sort of fell into the model that you're not speaking about, but a different model where there wasn't that oversight and continuity and dedication to it. And we had quite a few violations out of that, and it really affected the neighborhood. So that's why I asked those questions. I'm not asking them just to make you go.
No, no, no. Like I said, we focus on the security because we know the most important factor of the business is security. If we have theft, we need security. If we have liabilities, we need security. That portion and the management, as a general manager, to manage the people that are operating the business is prime to any retail business. If you can't have that, you don't have a successful retail business, no matter how much money you put in, you'll get robbed left and right, and you have issues left and right. And we know the liquor industry, and we know the adult industry, in both categories, it's full control system. So there's no, you know, we have no record of having any issues because we operate very much in control.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeCoursey, do you have any questions?
I have no real questions for the applicant. I may have a question for Mr. Heim later on, based on, I mean, sequencing.
Okay.
I just have one piece of advice maybe for the applicant if things go through, you know, based on the parking concern that we heard earlier. I mean, I think with the person who Susanna, Suzanne was referring to, was when they had the dry cleaner business there, I mean, that's when they were having parking issues, you know, not since it's been empty. So I'll just suggest, you know, if it works out, I mean, that when you do get customers, that you try to just emphasize to them, I mean, that they don't block, you know, that driveway, it'll just make for happier neighbors. I know it's a little more to do, you know, but it'll help because having, you know, close to, I guess it was Giles or Giles at the time, you know, I would see parking issues too. I think your delivery situation might be a little easier than it was on the other side of Mass Ave where there's just one lane going inbound. But, you know, the free delivery parking is just a problem, period, you know, for just about everything. And it's just something that we have to work on, you know, as a town and as a region. And so, yeah, it's just, it's something we have to work on, maybe micro deliveries or whatever, you know? So that's it, you know?
So answer to your concern, sorry. We completely understand, and one of the biggest things I've had in all numerous businesses that I, that we have that are based on pedestrian zone and traffic issues, signage is the biggest thing. And it's solved a lot of problems, and providing strategic signage for parking and restricted areas to not park, it solves huge problems. So that's one of the things we'll be working on.
Thank you. Thanks.
At this point, I think we've finished the public comment period, so I think we'll limit this, limit the discussion to the board and to the applicant at this point. All right. So now, I want to give the applicant and their attorney a final chance to raise any new points before we sort of close this portion of the hearing and then just move to the board for its own internal, but yet public, discussion and motions. Is there anything else that you wanted to briefly say to us?
Well, first, I'd just like to thank the board for listening to this extensive application and process. The applicant's put a lot of time and thought into this and resources, and runs a good job, is highly qualified, and a boutique wine store here ought to have a positive impact, especially with Monotomy now gone. One minor point to make is, I think there was some criticism of the name of the landlord. It's the Cronin family, but it's the Doria Trust. I believe that's Mrs. Cronin's maiden name, so hopefully that criticism can be struck from the record. But that being said, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. I just realized I shorted myself and forgot to ask my questions. The nice thing about being chair is I can fix that. I recall in your opening remarks, Attorney Upden, that a list of things you don't have are single, what, formerly called NIPS, what was it called?
Single.
Single serving bottles.
Line bottles.
No lottery, no kegs, no malt liquor, no candy.
Right.
Given that, would you be comfortable, should the board issue a license with a license that would restrict those uses, you know, the approval that would restrict those uses?
A condition restricts.
A condition, thank you, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we don't, we don't make those promises in an idle fashion. And frankly, one of the things that goes to public need and distinguishes us from Giles, for example, is that they focus on single service alcohol, on cheap beers, not sure if they sell kegs or not, but that's not part of our customer base. And when you walk into that store and see lottery tobacco and single service bottles, that's the impression, as a matter of fact, I did walk into that store today, and this was the first thing I saw, was the Nip of Fireball, which is the most popular single serve alcohol in Massachusetts, which you can confirm independently because you see empty ones on the street all day long. But yes, we're glad to accept that as a condition.
Thank you. My other question is about the signature gathering. I appreciate the affidavit. Now, when this was signed, Sarah said that she did about 35 signatures. So, you know, now submitted around 80. I guess my question is, did you collect signatures from any other locations than other the immediate neighborhood of the store?
No.
So like, did somebody go to other parts of town and?
Nope, nope. It was mostly in front of the store, on the block, across the street, down the street, you know, probably less than a third of a mile, half-mile radius at most.
Okay. So all the signatures were in what you would reasonably consider the neighborhood of the store?
Right. I mean, our thought was.
I understand that the dwelling, they might have been visiting from another part of town, but whether the signatures were gathered?
All right there. Yeah, no, we figured if we went to, you know, Penzies or Jimmy Steer House or something, no one would be. or Jimmy Steer House or something, no one would know what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are all my questions. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your closing remarks that preceded my final questions. And I think we can sort that out. So, at this point, certainly stay in the room and be available for any final questions the board may have. But I think I would turn now to my colleagues for our own discussion only. Any comments, motions? And I'd actually like to start with Mr. Dickens.
Yeah, I have a question for Chris Heim. Could you compare this to the HCA process that we went through? But my impression with that was if we said no, that was end of game. You know, meaning that if we said no to a license, it didn't have a chance to go any further. You know, is that the case here?
So, there's a. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Dickens. So, in any alcohol license hearing, if there's a denial, the applicant would have the right to appeal to the ABCC based on the law that I've sort of summarized. You know, you sort of have to demonstrate that it's arbitrary or capricious decision. It's not grounded in evidence before the select board. But, so, there is an appeal mechanism in these cases. The HCA process is a lot more untested. Is it possible? I didn't think so at the time, and I still think it would be a very tough road to hoe to try to force your way in to an HCA. So, that is a little bit distinct, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry to, because I think what we were getting at, and Mrs. Mahan was getting at, it's a matter of sequencing. It's like, who would he go to first? I mean, and so, what I'm trying to understand is that, other than the appeal process, I mean, if we were to say no, I mean, they didn't have a chance to say, well, I mean, it wasn't really clear who we should go to first. I mean, so now we'll go to ARB or ZBA, you know. I mean, that's not, that's not a possibility in this situation, right? If we say no.
No, no. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Attorney Heim.
Let me just be clear. Actually, in both circumstances, this is the body that decides substantively whether you think it's essentially a suitable business. I don't want the analogy to get, to go too far. I'm just trying, in terms of the sequencing piece of things and how some things are conditioned on zoning relief that later ends up vetting issues either at a different depth or in a slightly different way. This process is really oriented towards, is this, you know, ultimately a suitable business? And the criteria here are want and appropriateness. They're getting at the same thing, and this board is supposed to be the arbiter of that. You have a little bit more control in this situation than you have in an HCA. I just meant to illustrate that in the HCA situation, zoning relief is independent predicate to opening, and that would probably be the case here as well.
Gotcha.
I am positively inclined, you know, towards, I mean, letting the, giving approval. You know, I mean, certainly in light of, I mean, the owners, you know, their history with the town, you know, and their efforts. You know, I think they've made a really good effort, I mean, to find, I mean, a good, you know, losing the word, a good company, if I could put a better word, to occupy the space. You know, as I said, I mean, traffic and deliveries, you know, just issues. And we just need to get better, I mean, as a town and as a region and handling them. But where there's a will, there's a way, and we can work on that, you know. And, you know, yeah, I mean, I think competition's good, you know. So, I mean, and they are on opposite parts, areas of the capital district. I mean, and so, it's not like you have two in one block, you know. But I think having two in the area in which I live, you know, would be fine. You know, and I guess I'll just add to that. You know, I live in the area, but you probably won't see me in the store at all because, I like, I do not have the enzyme that breaks down alcohol. I mean, so I just can't, you know, drink the stuff without getting really sick. So, I'm not saying that because I really want another business that I'm going to support, you know, with my own money. But I can certainly support you as, I think, I mean, I think you'll be, I think as a company, you know, that would be good for the town, you know, so.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a few comments. And I appreciate the presentation, you coming back here, and I appreciate the dilemma that the landlord is in in terms of finding a tenant. Unfortunately, with our rules and regulations, and one of the goals to provide convenient and attractive parking and to take into traffic considerations. This has nothing to do with the business or the reputation of the applicant or anything, just the site. And so, I remain very concerned about the appropriateness of a liquor license at this location. And I'm leaning towards a no vote at this point, but I would like to hear from my colleagues as well. And while it's not this positive, the zoning of this parcel, it makes it very challenging. I think it's probably what's made it so challenging for you in terms of whether you come to us first, whether you go to the ZBA first. It's a unique situation. But I've been involved in two other licenses. Both of the locations had parking on-site, whether it was just for employees or whether it was for the public. And for me, that's an important consideration. The corner of Orbis and Mass Ave, it is a big concern with traffic and safety there for me, so. Mr. Heard?
Thank you.
Do you remember what your comment was?
Well, I was going to say, my first comment is sometimes these hearings are very difficult when you're raring to get in the conversation, but wait your turn. I should assure you, I do have the enzyme that breaks down alcohol. You may see me. For me, this is, this comes down to a simple analysis of, is the applicant appropriate? Is the location appropriate? I think I've been involved in two new liquor licenses, all packaged liquor stores. And I don't think either of the, to my recollection, neither had prior liquor store experience. They're both existing convenience store owners in Arlington, which is a great business and they have good reputations. But I think the applicant, in of the applications that we've had before, I don't think that any of them have been as sophisticated as this applicant and with the video cameras and a knowledge of ID systems and where a cash register should be in relation to the entrance when you're IDing. I think I am comfortable that this applicant could run a very successful liquor store business in town. I am not necessarily swayed either way by the fact that Ms. Patel is on two applications because I think we hear from applicants from time to time that everyone's going to be on-site all the time. And we've seen that in other stores and in restaurants. And we don't go in with a clock to see exactly how much time each applicant puts in, if so, in order to operate a business. We, the stores, whether it's restaurants or liquor stores that have failed in Arlington have been the ones that haven't had good oversight and have had violations. And that's led to the failure of some of these locations. And I think it's on the applicant to make sure that systems are in place so you don't have violations. And I don't want to prejudge somebody before they have the opportunity to run a successful business. So, again, and as far as timing, I think, you know, generally, we have a process. But I think it's a strategy decision for the applicant when you have to get multiple approvals to say, you know, which one do we go through that might require the least amount of initial capital to, and decide this is the one that we need, that we want to go first because then this is a difficult one or whatnot. So, I think that's just a decision on the applicant's front. I don't think there's anything, any reason to deny this just based on the fact that they came here before the ZBA. I think the applicant knows you have a tough road ahead as far as zoning. But for us, again, it's just, does the application, is the applicant appropriate? Is the location appropriate? So, I am fine with the applicant and what the applicant has put before us as far as security controls and experience. Location, I think, Mr. DeCoursey, we'd love to have businesses all around town that have parking, but I mean, it's not necessarily true. And not to take away from this very other point. I, it almost, some of the objections seem to be that this business might be too successful. We have a storefront, it's empty. We want to put a business in there, we want to have a business that's successful. You know, no matter who the business is. A lot of the traffic concerns, I think, would be present with other businesses. And there are some that might not have deliveries. But up and down Mass Ave, we have a lot of stores that get deliveries. We have restaurants that get deliveries, convenience stores that get deliveries. You know, loading zones have been difficult in Arlington. But to Mr. Dickens's point, as opposed to the store across the street where it's one lane, this does have two lanes. I think in that business, they figure it out. It's downtown Boston gets deliveries. There's not necessarily a lot of space for trucks there. I know one of the biggest issues we've had in Arlington Center is the Starbucks semi, Starbucks materials get dropped off in a semi truck that's parked in front of the Capitol Theater. We figure it out. As far as proximity, when these licenses came out, and Mrs. Mahan can correct me, but I think initially there were three. And the plan was to have one in, divided the town to East Arlington, the center, and the heights. So, now we have seven with, if we still divide into those three zones, that would put two in one, two in one, and three in the other. Tom Eaton gave us three licenses to fill. So, I'm not necessarily swayed that there's two other liquor stores around. I know, you know, Monotomy Beer and Wine is up in the air, whether you say it's coming back or not. I think the proximity to the other liquor store on Mass Ave has been a little bit overstated. I mean, it is three or four blocks down, it's across the street. So, I don't necessarily think that that being, you know, that far away. It's really on the outskirts to call them both in the Capital Square District. But I, again, I don't think that that is prohibitive for this store. I think the layout is fine. I think the layout will get reworked, like Attorney mentioned. If this changes, then they have to come back to us to approve the changes. So, for me, I'm okay with the application. Like Mr. Dickens, I'm inclined to support it. I mean, I think the liquor license exists. We created the liquor license. There hasn't been a demand for it. Every time we put a liquor license out, I think we get one applicant max when we advertise that we're going to be putting a liquor license out, so. And we do have a family-owned property that's been a family for a long time. And it is a struggle for commercial landlords to, this has been a separate discussion for years, empty storefronts. And as Mrs. Cronin mentioned, we're in a process of finding storefronts that don't have, that don't fill their spaces. And I think we've realized that that's, it's not so simple as to just go to a landlord and say they dropped somebody in your business or else we're going to fine you X dollars a month. I would like to see as many businesses as we can in town, as many storefronts as we can filled. And so, I don't think, I mean, if you have a business and landlord that feel like they have a relationship that will mesh, I don't think that, again, is prohibitive of why we should approve the license. So, to me, I am fine with this application, the applicant, and I would be happy to support a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if I can take advantage of you in this way, but one of the things.
Let's see.
One of the things that I see as a big positive is, you had noted what Attorney Upton said in the beginning about three or four things, single use, they would agree to certain conditions. Do you still have that list or no?
Yep, single use, otherwise known as NIPs, lottery, kegs, malt liquor, and candy.
And I think I heard from Attorney Upton that in Mr. Patel that that would be agreeable, acceptable and agreeable conditions on the license. And I understand the dilemma right now of the six liquor stores that we have in town. Four of them have a parking lot, is what I'll call it. Two of them don't, the one in East Arlington on Mass Ave and the one in the Heights by Foot of the Rocks. They mostly depend on, although the one in the Heights may have employee parking in the back, but in terms of public parking. But Summer Street Mystic Wine, Convenience Store, as well as the one on Broadway, those do have a dedicated parking area. And that's always something that we have to sort of go back and forth on. In terms of applicants who have to appear before us and possibly one or two other boards, that's not something, and I understand for the applicant to bear that. Issue and further define it, so maybe as we have conversations in a different forum, moving forward, and maybe there's nothing we can do about that. It just has to be, sometimes we're first, second, or third. But I think for me, I am concerned about the parking, but that would apply to a lot of businesses here in Arlington. And I do understand that we're moving forward, trying to encourage not just vehicular, not just pedestrian, other modes of transportation, hopefully to help make the town safer as well as revitalize some of our businesses. So, for me, with the listed conditions there, I would be comfortable approving this license. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll speak to my own views. I think I'm with Mr. DeCoursey on, and probably a no on this, but appreciative of a motion, because I think I'm counting the votes correctly, that there's enough to board this. Would certainly appreciate that motion that would have the conditions. You know, my concerns are really just nothing at all about the applicant, but suitability to the neighborhood and to the location. And I think the best use of this property. I think with regard to resident input, I don't discount the input and the form letters that were gathered by the applicants. But I think that there's, you know, there's quantity and then there's quality. And I think I'm very moved by the quality of the individually expressed views of people from the neighborhood. I share Mr. DeCoursey's concerns along the other things, so I won't repeat those. So, but that said, I think we've all sort of declared ourselves, and I would welcome a motion at this point.
I'll make the motion to approve the application subject to the conditions, you know, no single serve, no candy, no lottery sales, let's back though. What else?
I think you have a kegs and malt liquor.
Oh, kegs and malt liquor. Hey, okay, that's it.
That's my list.
Okay, that's fine. I don't, I'm not inclined to add anything else. But I saw Mr. Heim.
Mr. Attorney Heim, did you have any advice?
I would be curious, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
If the applicants have some sense of an agreed-upon timeframe to try to get that zoning relief so that we're not sitting in limbo for a long period of time, in their interests, in our interests, you know, a sort of, obviously, alcohol licenses are subject to renewal every year. So, maybe that's the way that they would propose to deal with it. But I think it'd be helpful for the board to have some sense of, when are you going to apply for the zoning relief or sort that out? And, you know, how long do you think you need to try to arrange for that?
Yeah, I'll use my prerogative to invite that answer. Attorney Upton?
If the board is willing to grant this license today, then the town has to send it to the ABCC, which typically takes anywhere between four and 12 weeks for them to do their process and send it back. But we would commit to engaging, we have engaged zoning and real estate council, and we will direct and activate him and her, it's a team, tomorrow morning.
Mr. Chairman, is there a timeframe that you folks might agree upon that, you know, to try to get a decision out of? I mean, I understand that the ZBA or the ARB shouldn't be locked into a specific timeframe, but do you have?
Right, I mean, we're glad to. Right, I mean, we're glad to complete the application and send it in, and will appear as soon as they'll hear us. I'm not familiar with their calendar, but we're ready to go.
Yeah, Attorney Heinz, I think you're suggesting that the board may want to contemplate putting into the, into the approval a timeframe for the completion of the curing the zoning, potential zoning issues?
I guess I would say at least putting in an application for the zoning relief, should that be necessary.
I'm sorry, putting in?
Putting in an application for the zoning relief, necessary, if it's.
As a condition?
Four to 12 weeks for the ABCC. It's a longer timeframe, but maybe within six months of this decision, if that sounds reasonable for you to put in your application.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's fine. I mean, as I said, we'll, we'll activate the zoning council tomorrow, and, I mean, I don't know how complex it is to file for this, but I mean, it should be, it shouldn't be six months by any stretch. We'll, we'll start now.
So, Mr. Diggins, would you be open to expanding your motion to put the six months timeframe on applying for the zoning relief?
Of course.
Yes. So we have that amendment for the most.
Yes.
So I believe I still need a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussions from the board? On a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? That is a three-two vote in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you for your patience. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin. Doria Cronin.
Thanks to all who came a second time to appear due to my procedural glitches. I'm gonna check in with the board. Does anyone need a brief recess? All right. Let's move on to open forum. So, it's there, so we'll do it. Except in unusual circumstances, any member presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted on nor decision made in the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a time limit to present a concern or request of three minutes. So, do we have any people in Zoom, please raise your hand, or in the room, please raise your hand if you want to comment under open forum this evening? All right. Seeing none, move on to item 10. Approval. Signage and Traffic Rules and Orders Amendment for Electric Bus and Vehicle Charging Stations at Odison Middle School. And I am delighted to welcome to, in succession here, long-suffering, and I have to say, star employees of our planning department here who have been patient, but also done, in my view, some really excellent preparatory work for this evening. So I will turn it over to you, Ms. Fox, if you please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Talia Fox. I'm the Sustainability Manager for the town. Thanks to the members of the Select Board for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I believe I do have a slide presentation. I'm here to share some updates on Arlington's electric school bus project and present requests for parking restrictions and modifications to the traffic rules and orders. I want to note that previous versions of the presentation that you may have seen incorrectly stated that the request was for a bylaw modification. I'm aware that that is incorrect and want to affirm that it is indeed for modifications to the traffic rules and orders before I proceed. So first, just for some project background, as you know, we have a net zero action plan. That plan commits the town to purchasing only zero emission vehicles by 2030 as a priority action in pursuit of our goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. We are getting a head start on this priority action and focusing on school buses for two key reasons. One is that they directly support student health by improving air quality for students on and around the bus, which certainly is welcome in these smoky times. There is also ample funding for electric school buses right now, and in 2021, the town did secure both federal and state funds for two electric school buses and two direct current fast charging stations to charge those buses. I'll just note that this was before my time with the town. I started in January of 2022. So there are some details of this project that I, I will try to speak to based on my conversations with my predecessor and Deputy Town Manager Jim Feeney, but there may be some things that I have to check on as well. For a bit more detail, next slide, please. In addition to the two electric school buses to replace two diesel buses in the fleet and two fast chargers, the project includes two Level 2 chargers, which are for school personnel use during the day and public use outside of school hours. The chargers will be sited at Odison Middle School in the lower parking lot, which was decided after consideration of a few other sites, as I understand it. Most notably, the project team considered the lot of the St. Camillus Parish where the town currently rents land to store the buses, but there was a concern around investing in infrastructure on rented land. The next slide shows a diagram of where in the Odison lower parking lot the chargers will sit. The fast charging dispensers have actually already been installed, and the Level 2 dispensers will be built and installed in the coming months. The first request to the Select Board is for approval of parking restrictions for these spots and corresponding signage. For the fast chargers, R7 series signage from the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or MUTCD, would be adopted to limit parking to the buses and indicate that all other vehicles parked in these spots are at risk of being towed. For the public Level 2 chargers, R7 MUTCD signage would be used to indicate that vehicles parked in these spots should be actively charging and indicate that all other vehicles are at risk of being towed. As the next slide shows, this type of signage is used for other Level 2 town-owned chargers. The signage for the chargers at Odison will in fact look identical to the signage just recently installed for the stations at Schuler Court by the high school, which is pictured here on the right. The second request to the board is for the modification of the town's Traffic Rules and Orders, Section 15D, to enable enforcement of these restrictions. The purpose of proposed Section 15D Paragraph G is to enable Arlington Police to ticket or tow members of the public who are not school personnel who park in the designated charging station spaces during school hours. This amendment would apply to the new Level 2 stations at the Odison Middle School, and it would also apply to the stations that are already located at the high school in Schuler Court and at the Gibbs School. Currently, for these stations, the policy is that only school personnel are permitted to use the stations during school hours. Access during school hours is controlled with a code provided to school personnel only, but that code is not a sufficient way to ensure that the stations remain available for staff. This amendment makes violations enforceable to preserve this charging benefit for school personnel. And I'll note that this was introduced in consultation with Officer Corey Rato with the Arlington Police Department. The purpose of Paragraph H is to enable the Arlington Police to ticket or tow members of the public who park in the spots designated for the electric school buses at Odison Middle School. This would ensure that the spots are available at all times for the buses to charge so they can safely and quickly get students where they need to go. Should signage and amendments be approved? An immediate next step, next slide, please. We'll be manufacturing the signs, ideally in the next few weeks. We are waiting for a final piece of electrical infrastructure to be delivered, which should enable the utility to energize the charging stations, ideally in August. I'll note that this part of the project, just so the board is aware, has been delayed unfortunately for approximately nine months due to supply chain issues. So we're hopeful that by September, we will be able to start using the electric school buses and have a ribbon-cutting event on Town Day. We will alert the board once plans for the ribbon-cutting are finalized. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is Mrs. Mahan, third time's a charm.
It's okay. First, I'd like to move approval. Second, it's okay if you don't know the answers to these questions. It's more for my edification, and I live, I can see, when I was speaking with Mr. Alessi the other day, I told him exactly where I lived, which is right behind the Odison. Approximately how long does it take for the DC chargers for the buses? Do you know how long that takes to charge?
Yes, actually.
And then my follow-up question is, what if those two DC chargers for the buses, not for the other two, inexplicably weren't usable? I assume the backup plan is, I guess it's dependent on how long it takes to charge these buses, and the backup plan is if those two buses can't charge up at the Odison, they'll go down to the high school or down to the yard, public yard? If I could, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes, please.
So, the time to charge the buses, and I actually have a slide on this for reference with some other bus statistics, if you want to take a look at those in the deck, but it's about two to four hours. As for if they're unable to charge, we do have a partnership with other charging stations in town, so we actually were trying to use the buses a few months back, because we actually have had the buses for about a year now. The chargers have delayed the whole project, which has been really unfortunate. So we were actually able to charge at a nearby car dealership. Unfortunately, the town's Level 2 chargers are not compatible with the bus engines, which is an unfortunate discovery that I think in retrospect, we would have liked to put in the bid to ensure that compatibility. We do have, you know, a warranty, and we have service available for the chargers should anything go awry. But I think if a backup plan beyond that is something that is, something that the board wants us to have, I can speak with the school department about that.
And then, Level 2 chargers?
Oh, yes.
During school hours, school personnel, school vehicles, but am I correct that outside of that, so non-school hours, after whatever the time is, five, seven, nine, indoor weekends, on the Level 2, not the bus, those are available to the public?
That's correct.
And is it the same in terms of how long it takes to charge an electric car, approximately one to two hours?
So, the distinction here is between, oh, sorry.
Ms. Fox.
This distinction here is between a Level 2 charger and a Level 3 charger, or a direct current fast charger. The bus chargers are this direct current Level 3 fast charger, and so they have a quicker charge because they provide more current, or more power to the engine, or to the battery, rather. The Level 2 chargers have less power going to the batteries, so the charge time will vary based on the size of the battery of the vehicle. If you had about a 40 kilowatt hour capacity battery, which is roughly what sort of a typical passenger vehicle would be, I believe the charge time is somewhere between five and eight hours. But again, it sort of varies. I believe our Level 2 chargers are ChargePoint brand, and they have about a seven kilowatt capacity. So it's about five and 5.8, or something like that.
Thank you. And honestly, goodness, wanted to know that, because I can definitely see, not on the DC charger, but on the Level 2 chargers, residents on those non-school hours availing them of the opportunity to use that. And as far as if for some reason that happens and it goes into school hours, I'm assuming a tow is a tow is a tow, but you have to unplug the car, but I'll leave that to if for some reason we need to tow one of those. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if I, if I may add?
Of course, Ms. Fox.
That often when folks are charging, they're not at zero, right? So in my, the time for both the buses, I'll say, and also for a passenger vehicle, might be slightly less than that, because you're not necessarily getting down to a fully empty tank, tank.
Have you met me?
No.
Well, depends.
No, I don't, it's all right. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Just a quick question on the, if you can see it, instead of pulling it back up, isn't there two entrances to this parking lot?
There are currently two entrances to the parking.
Is that to scale? As far as how big a bus would be in that space?
So, that is, it is not to scale. I created it, and it's not to scale, but I do, I do, sorry.
No, no, good.
I can probably anticipate my question. It looks like if there was a bus there and a car there, we're essentially blocking the entrance. I guess my question is, is it necessary to take that spot, space out too? Or when a bus is parked in there, would, I guess it would just be silly to create a situation where a bus kind of blocks the way if there's a car. And again, I'm happy to support it. My only question is, would it be necessary to take this space out to allow people to get in and out of the parking lot?
My understanding is that it would block, the two buses would block the entrance to the parking lot. And that's, as I understood the project as conceptualized, was always the intent, is that when the buses are parked there, no one would be able to enter through that, through that entrance. As for whether it would, my understanding is it wouldn't block that space, it wouldn't prevent someone from parking in that space on the side, but it would block the entrance to that closer, or it would block that closer entrance. And I'm happy to go back and create a to-scale diagram of how large the buses, the size of the buses would, you know, take up in that space.
Yeah, I don't want you to make you have to do more work than, 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 is that sorry. I'm just looking if, is it not contemplating not allowing the bus charging stations, just whether or not that parking space is going to cause a problem. Even if you say, all right, can't use that entrance there because the bus is blocking it, I wonder if a car could back out of that closest charging space, or back out of, I just don't know if there's enough swing there. So, I mean, I guess that's an engineering problem that they'll deal with once it's put into place. But it just seems to me that if there's two buses there, there's going to be some issues with cars getting in and out of the spaces that are both right next to the buses and those two spaces at the bottom, just to swing a car in and out, get a little Austin Powers action.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Fox, for the presentation. And just a question that the chargers, the buses are only going to be there when they're charging, right? They're not going to be parked there overnight. They're, that will be, I don't know if they're up at St. Camillus, or if they're, they'll be down at the, at the high school when they're fully charged, if you know.
My understanding is that they would only be there when charging, but I, I would like to confirm with Steve Angelo, the fleet manager. So I'm happy, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. And I certainly support the chargers. I, Mr. Hurd makes a good point on where the buses are, and I will say in the winter, of course, we can't see it from the overhead, that's a pretty good incline into that lot, and it's, that can get really icy. And I don't know, you know, when the buses are going at a slow speed, whether that's going to be a problem in terms of moving the lot, because having been involved in a lot of programming up at the Odison on weekends in the winters, I've seen cars slide all over the place in that lot. So it's, it's, I know there was, this was the best location that was selected, and I think there was others that were rejected, and as I said, I'm happy to support it. But I almost feel like, is there a way to check? Go back and see, or any other locations. I don't know why others weren't deemed feasible, but clearly we need a couple charges. But once you do the drawings to scale, if you see this is going to be a little bit more difficult, maybe, maybe we need to select someplace else. But for now, I'm happy to support it.
I'm happy to support it. I just have curiosity questions, but it's 9:24, so I'm not going to ask them.
I have, I'm going to channel Mrs. Mahan here and ask a couple of technical questions that may be moot. And Attorney Heinz, this is your heads up. On the recommended changes to the, to the parking regulations, there's two statements that say violation of this regulation could result in a vehicle being ticketed or towed. Would it be better if it said may result, instead of could result? And what I'm thinking of is to make it clear that the town has the authority to do that, or if it doesn't matter, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that if you feel it's clear to say may, then let's say may.
That's a very diplomatic response, Attorney Heinz. Would, let's see, Ms. Mahan, would you be comfortable with?
I'm in.
All right. Any other discussion? So on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for staying tonight.
Five, nothing, sounds like a scoreboard.
Yeah, it does sound like a scoreboard, yes. Having quoted Red Sox scores before the night's out. All right. Blue bike station expansion, number 11. Mr. Alessi, you're up. Also, thank you for saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's hour 13 in this building right now. And thank you, members of the Select Board for having me this evening. My name's John Alessi, Senior Transportation Planner in the Department of Planning and Community Development. I'm here tonight to request the approval to install two new blue bike stations here in Arlington. The first on Bill Street at the Miniman Bike Way Crossing, the second The first on Mill Street at the Miniman Bike Way Crossing, the second at Arlington High School on Mass Ave. So these locations were determined based on a resident survey released by my office in spring 2022. These were the top two locations requested by residents. The first on Mill Street will be on street. There'd be no impact to parking regulations because there's currently no parking allowed in that area. And the second location at Arlington High School would involve, would require the removal of two on-street parking spaces. However, the location is directly adjacent to the CVS parking lot, which has 70 spaces. So our office felt that there would be minimal impact to parking availability in the vicinity. I have consulted with the Arlington Police Department and the Department of Public Works to ensure that there wouldn't be any negative impacts to traffic operations, public safety. They don't foresee any potential negative impacts. And if implemented, this will increase the number of stations in Arlington from six to eight, which will help fulfill first-last-mile transit solutions and increase availability of access to recreation open spaces. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alessi. And I'll turn to the board. Mr. Diggins?
Sure. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve this, and then I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So on that CVS station, you know, I see that there's a space for one compact vehicle. And I'm thinking that it might be a good idea to put bike racks there instead of the compact parking space, because we, I think probably what you'll find is that, you know, cars that aren't so compact will end up trying to park there, which could probably pose problems, you know, for that nearby driveway. Also, I mean, I just hear, I mean, a lot of people asking for more bike racks, you know. And so, so I just put that out there as a suggestion, you know. And then my, my other question, my only question, actually. So these available stations could be taken out during winter time. So in this case, what would happen to those spaces in the winter time?
They would be made available again for the two-hour parking.
Okay, that's a, thank you. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mr. Diggins' motion, and I want to thank you, Mr. Alessi, for the presentation tonight, but also the information you provided to me prior to the meeting. Just one comment, and this may be a comment directed towards Attorney Hyne for future, for the future. I'm happy to support the blue bike station on Mill Street. As I look at the aerial, and as we discussed last week, to me, the better spot there is along the bike way. And I know that's within the MBTA right-of-way. And since I've been on the board and since I've been in town, I've been told over and over again, it's hard to deal with the MBTA with the right-of-way. And I think this is the type of thing where, you know, I'd like to work through Attorney Hyne and perhaps Mr. Diggins too, with the MBTA and say, this makes perfect sense. There's plenty of room on either side of that bike way to move the blue bikes. Can we cut through the red tape and do it? Because it's, as you're coming down the bike way, and I walked down there over the weekend, there's a lot of room there. And it just would eliminate some concerns on Mill Street. But for now, happy to approve it. But maybe I could ask Attorney Hyne, what can we do about right-of-way issues with the MBTA? Because it seems to be a constant obstacle.
Attorney Hyne?
Just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeCoursey, I couldn't agree more. While the MBTA is a wonderful partner in many, many, many ways, their sort of management of real estate is sort of half exported or farmed out and half sort of maintained in-house. I'll try to, maybe see if I can mine some contacts for ways to approach it in a different way. But they're, my understanding of their position, I'm saying I don't represent them, is this is very reticent to grant any property rights within their right-of-way, and that their overall perspective is that they've granted this license for the bike path, and we sort of administer it. But we've seen in a few interesting instances, some real reticence and even some aggressiveness in terms of asserting their rights relative to private property owners who have tried to make what is otherwise pretty sensible uses of some of this. So I welcome that, that direction and that challenge, and these folks can help me make some headway that I haven't made before.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
It was just in response to.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, so I'll have to work with you on that. And Mr. Hyne, I did talk, I made a little progress, you know, about six months ago, you know, and just going through the advisory board, you know. And there's a reason for why, when it stalled, I didn't push, you know. But this is another, you know, vehicle, pun intended, for making that push me. So if Mr. DeCoursey gave me my plus one on this, you know, we can work with Mr. Hyne and then report that to the board.
Three Musketeers, watch out. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you for the presentation and also taking the time to walk me through this before. I'm happy to support it. I think there's definitely a need for more, a demand and for more blue bike stations. Had similar comments about the location at Mill Street. My only concern about the location is, you know, visibility of cyclists and pedestrians coming out of the bike path. But I think that's minor and can be handled. But long-term, that is certainly a better location. So happy to support it. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Definitely happy to support this, as well as the opportunity to meet with Mr. Alessi. And I just want to sort of codify or memorialize the conversation you and I had on the blue bike in front of the high school, which is very close to and/or buts the very used crosswalk by student staffs, staff and other people, residents. One of the things I was concerned about that I raised with you, and you actually had a very good retort back to it, is sometimes with the blue bikes at either end or both end, they put up really tall sort of advertisements or just the structure of it. And where that is, especially, we all know, high school students, earbuds, cell phones, they see a crosswalk, I'm safe, I go. And I was, I was concerned about that in terms of being a visual impediment. But I think you had a proper response to that. If I may, Mr. Chair, please.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that earlier, so thank you for bringing that up. Yes. So the stations usually come with an advertisement panel that, pretty tall, it can obstruct the visibility of those using the crosswalks at both locations. So yes, I'm going to request that when blue bikes, if approved, if blue bikes installs locations, that they do not include the advertisement panel, so that there are no obstructions to those crossing at the crosswalks.
I was also concerned about Mill Street, but definitely the one at the high school. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Alessi.
Thank you.
And I'm also delighted to support this. So for the discussion, we have a motion from Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed is five, zero vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12, we will now recall that we have a town manager joining us remotely, and thank you for, sir, for your patience. This is the update on the ARPA budget, and we have Mr. Sandy Poehler, Town Manager. And Ms. Mahan is preparing to put the budget table up on the, up on the screen.
Sorry, Sandy.
So can we do?
Figure, all right, so we're going to see.
No, no, I'm trying to move it. It's half on the screen, not on. Here we go. That's not what I need, but it's stuck.
While you were, but there we go.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board members. So what you have in front of you is a compilation of our ARPA spending through fiscal year '23. After FY '23, we have about another year and a half of spending that's on the table. But I thought tonight, what we wanted to do was to just show you what we've actually expended to date, some of the progress that we've made, and give you some sense of how much money is then left from this. I had thought that originally I might make a presentation tonight making future recommendations about spending. But as we've gone through putting this together and various other things that have been going on in the office, I think it's probably best that the next town manager make those recommendations to you. So tonight, I just want to go through this list and just give you a sense of the totals here and answer any specific questions you have about some of these allocations. So I'm just going to highlight particularly some of the big items here. As you see in the sheet, for revenue loss, we have so far actually spent $5 million of our, $35 million of ARPA allocations on the FY '23 budget. During the town meeting this spring, town meeting voted another $5 million to be used for the FY '24 budget. So all in all, we will have used up $10 million. But what the sheet shows is just to date, $5 million has actually been spent. For various things on public health, we, excuse me, we have spent 370 of the 536, so there will be some money left over there. Equity and inclusion, well, I guess I would say for all of these things, we've made progress on all of these items. And the department heads, we've asked to come back to us with recommendations for how to real, allocate their unspent money going forward. I did want to point out the premium pay. As I mentioned to you about a month ago, I did decide to authorize payment to our retirees who had worked during COVID. They will get their payments in this week's payroll. We were waiting for the first of the year payrolls to go through so that the payroll office could take on that spending, but those will now be processed this Thursday. So you should hear from some of our former employees about that. Behavioral health support, we have spent most of the money on crisis intervention and AYCC. We have not spent much of the behavioral health reserve, and so at some point, we will, we will reallocate that. Small business assistance, we originally allocated $1.5 million, and we've spent nearly all of that. So that's right on track. The same thing for support for the Chamber of Commerce. Tenant assistance, we have spent about 60% of that, and we are thinking about whether there is still room for that or not. And we're in discussions with the planning department on that. Food security, we spent all but $100,000. And again, there's a reserve of $100,000 there. HVAC improvements, we have not spent much of that to date, but that's because the RFPs for the design for various HVAC improvements in town and school buildings are out on the street now. We expect those back by the end of the summer, and we will then be doing the design work. So it's taken a little longer to get that stuff out on the street and to get it moving. But we do intend to really spend all of that eventually. Parks and open spaces have proceeded apace. Water and sewer spending is actually a little bit of ahead of space. There's more money in '24 and '25 for that. And I have been looking at, try to allocate more money for that because there is a huge need. Under affordable housing, I just want to mention that we spent $3 million out of the 4.4 that we've allocated. Some of that is just because of sort of ongoing conversations, particularly with nonprofits, about supporting affordable housing in town. I do think this money will be spent. It's just, it's taken a little longer to do it than we thought. Homelessness is an area where we had some initial allocation of $50,000. Still trying to figure out what the best way to spend that, those funds are. And I think Mr. Feeney will have some recommendations on that going forward. Remote meeting infrastructure, we've just spent a little bit of that, although I think we have very good infrastructure set up around town from various sources for this. So we may be able to reallocate some of that. And just administration and oversight, again, we'll be able to reallocate some of that. So overall, this is the program that was laid out to you in May, I think it was of 2021 or 2022. I frankly don't remember. It was the last budget you voted on, and it was in May. And I think, I will say, in the next iteration of this, I think we will present it somewhat differently because the way that the federal government wants us to show our spending, the categories are somewhat different. So I would anticipate a slightly different presentation. But I wanted to put these numbers in the same way that you've seen them before, so that you can see the continuation of what had previously been set out. With that, so we have spent or obligated to date of the FY '22 and '23, $20 million of the 24 and a half, plus going forward for FY '24, there's another $5 million that we will spend for the FY '24 budget. So if you take that $5 off the 14.8 that is, is remaining, that leaves about $9, almost $10 million still to be spent or reallocated. And as I said, new incoming town manager, Feeney, will talk to you about that. With that, I hope I've made clear what our spending is today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. And at this point, I think we can take the chart down so we can see our town manager on video. And I'll turn to the board, if any questions. Mrs. Mahan?
First, I'd like to move her seat.
Yes.
Second, my first question, the town manager already answered, which is, instead of 14.9, it's 9.9, with a second allocation of $5 million for general fund. And then I guess I'll just ask the question one more time, although I have had conversations with the town manager, Mr. Poehler, about this. Is it still the case that I'm overthinking and over worrying talk coming out of Washington regarding ARPA spending, auditing, and possibly losing unspent funds? Is there anything you can add to that again, just to reassure me or re-educate me, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please. Mr. Poehler?
Thank you, Select Board Member Mahan. I know there was a lot of talk about that in the public, but I have seen publications coming out of national organizations and out of the MMA making clear that those issues are now off the table. I will say in Washington, anything can change, but right now, I don't see that as a threat to us. I think it's important that we continue to allocate our funds and make plans to spend them and spend them on a timely basis. But I'm not worried that they're going to be taken back by the Congress.
Okay, thank you. And then my second point would be, perhaps Mr. Poehler along with Mr. Feeney could carry over on this one. When appropriate, possibly the next reporting period, and I understand Mr., the town manager said the document may look different, which I understand. If the board could be provided along with that documentation, sort of a twofold, what I'm going to call a twofold heads-up. The first part of the heads-up is, I would be interested in if there were any positions and indoor programs. So that's what the twofold of it is. If we could receive a document when appropriate that sort of gives us a heads-up or highlights any positions or programs that have been funded by ARPA, and that there should be a serious discussion that when ARPA funding no longer is there, A, we at least get notified that these positions or programs are. that these positions or programs aren't continuing, and/or if the current or future town manager has any thoughts on either of those two. Am I somewhat clear through the chair, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Poehler? Do you understand what I'm sort of asking for?
Mr. Poehler.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yes, I believe I do understand that, and we will provide further information to the board.
Thank you. And I don't mean to be sarcastic with that. I just know when I'm trying to couch my question, I sometimes get convoluted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hurd.
Yep, just a quick question. So, and I apologize if this has been explained. It's getting late. For categories such as homelessness, where to date, we've budgeted $500,000 in the initial budget that was presented, and only $50,000 has been spent, is it the intention that we're going to find a way to spend $450,000? Or when Ms. Feeney takes this over and provides us with a new framework, it could be that he, you know, a fair amount of that gets reduced to what's actually needed? Or I know in general budgets, if you don't spend it, you lose it, whereas, you know, we have, you know, a fair amount that was in the fiscal year '22 budget for opera that wasn't spent. I guess are we still shooting to hit these numbers that are sitting here, that are in our budget, or are these going to be reworked once Mr. Feeney puts his hands on it?
If I may, Mr. Chair. That call ultimately will be Mr. Feeney's. I would say generally, though, I think with the conversations I've had with the department heads to date, I think the issue is what is the best way to serve those people, whether we are spending it on what we would call homelessness, or whether spending it on things like housing are more appropriate. So I think we understand that there are problems that need to be solved, and it may be needing to move the money into different categories on this sheet is the most appropriate way to help those people. So those are, I think, just ongoing conversations we've been having, and Mr. Feeney will then present to you, I think, what our thinking is about the best way to go forward.
Okay. And that makes sense. I just wanted to, and I'm certainly not saying that Mr. Feeney wants to take money away from homelessness. I think this was a framework that we, we got inundated with this large amount of money, and we kind of broke down, hey, well, let's put some here and put some there, and we didn't really know that in practical reality, where the funds would be best placed. And I think we did the best that we could at the time. So I would look forward to kind of suggestions as to how to reallocate the funds, because we certainly want, as Mrs. Mahan said, we do want to spend the money that we've received, and we want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck with the, with the money that we have. So I would be interested to see if some of these categories where it's underspent, I certainly don't think it's because they're being ignored. It's just the opportunities to spend within those categories haven't presented themselves to make sure that we are being good stewards of the money that we've been given and putting the funds where they're most needed. And again, I just picked that one category. I don't want to harp on homelessness. It could be the same thing for HVAC, which that might have been an easier, more gray area to use as an example. But so I'll look forward to further conversations about that.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Poehler, for the presentation, and I actually had brought the last stopper framework update. It's actually at the end of April, beginning of May, April 20th, and we endorsed certain things. And I have the opposite question from Mrs. Mahan. Of the monies that have been spent, over $20 million to date, there was a procedure where different categories, Powers and Sullivan, may have looked at it to say, yes, this is within the framework, it's okay to spend it. Are we, we remain comfortable, I guess I'm looking for confirmation, that what has been spent to date is all within the allowed categories, and there's, there's no issue in terms of a potential look back on, on categories?
Mr. Chair, so there are, I think, two questions. One is we file our spending reports with the federal government every quarter, and so we tell them how money is being spent. And so far, we haven't heard anything back from the feds that would indicate that there's anything wrong with our spending. Second, we do have these items audited by our outside auditors. Because of the amount of money involved, it requires a federal audit. We recently just went through some long conversations with Powers and Sullivan about whether we need to do further auditing of the recipients of this money, or whether they were considered sub-receipients, people who are just entities passing the money along to, say, residents of the town, or whether they were the beneficiaries of the monies themselves. This frankly is an obscure federal regulation about how you define things. I just want to say, though, that we did go through them category by category. I feel confident of their review, Powers and Sullivan's review of our spending plans. And so I don't see any indication on the horizon that we've had any problems. I think we've been spending the money conscientiously. We've certainly spent a lot of time looking at our federal regulations about our abilities to spend. And I would also just say our comptroller herself has spent a lot of time, as she is very capable and want to do, of making sure that the spending fits the federal categories.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler. And just one comment. I was very happy to hear you announce tonight that you did make the decision for the premium pay for the retirees. You told me that recently, and happy to hear that that has happened, and I think all of us on the board are happy to see that. So thank you for that announcement.
Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, Sandy. So obscure, I mean, it's where the rubber hits the road, and I know it's really hard, to make sure that you're staying within the bounds, I mean, and so, so I'll have a conversation with Mr. Feeney, because, I mean, we just have to be careful on the board here, you know, to kind of stay in our lane, but we all know how I feel about me trying to find people who could really benefit from this, and I know it's really hard, you know, to identify, you know, people who live in town, you know, or work in town, who kind of really could have used the help, especially then, and could probably still use the help now. I know that Cambridge has done some, some, let's say, kind of out of the box thinking on this, although I guess not so out of the box, because we've seen, you know, other communities do that, and I know it would be really hard to implement something like that here, but certainly if we're going to find ourselves in a situation where we are having difficulty spending the money, maybe we should, not should, but could, you know, try to do something a little more adventurous. But once again, you know, I want to stay in my lane, you know, and I'll stay in my lane gingerly with Mr. Feeney when he comes on board. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question for Town Manager Poehler. Just so I understand these bottom line figures correctly. So I see that we've budgeted to date about $24.5 million. Does that include the additional $5 million in revenue loss general fund for FY24?
If you could, Ashley, could you pull up the sheets again?
Yeah.
I'm working on it, sorry.
Oh, you're just going to do it this way. Can you see it now, Sandy?
Yeah, I see it now. So we've budgeted to date $24 million. That just includes $5 million of the, of the revenue replacement. And so that's included in the $28,349,000 that has been budgeted and spent to date, just that first $5 million. But it makes it look like there might be $5 million more available to be spent than there really is, because that $5 million, that $20, you could almost say, is $25 million spent to date, because it's already been voted by town meeting. It just doesn't show up in the '23 budget. If that is, I hope that's answered your question.
Yeah, no, that doesn't. And just to further that a little bit, what's the best round number to understand how much has not been budgeted yet, if any, of the $35.2 million?
Well, it's all been budgeted. It's all, there are budgets for '23 and '24 for the remaining money.
All right, there we go. Okay. So just, but just not showing in this chart? Yeah, okay. That's kind of a recollection that we already, you know, moved that out, but. So at this point, it really is a question of, of moving, shifting things between categories, which is what you said before in response to Mr. Hurd. Okay. Thank you. So I still need a second on the motion to receive.
Second.
Oh, there you go.
One quick call, and I know it's late, but, you know, one area that I'm happy to see that we've spent almost everything budgeted within $9,000 was the small business nonprofit assistance, because I know when we got this, all this money, it really was in response to COVID, and we were trying to identify the areas that needed it most, and that was the essential workers and the businesses. And that shows good management by the town on reaching out to our businesses and showing that, and letting them know that the money's available, and working with the businesses to make sure that gets paid out, because that was really important. I know a lot of businesses are struggling, and certainly when we got the allocation, there were a lot of businesses that were really looking forward to getting some assistance to get them through the lean couple of years that they had.
All right, so I think we, the motion to receive by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Poehler. Please stay around. We've got item 13, vote, temporary provisions to parking policy and regulations to incorporate overnight parking pilot. Mr. Diggins.
Yes, thanks, man. And I'm sorry that the unread line version wasn't, didn't make it into your packet, because I find the red line version is really hard to read. But essentially, I just wanted to have something in place with our policy. Last time we voted, and it was just late, and I didn't want to try to get this back into the vote, but I just feel that it's important that we have a temporary policy in place so that staff can refer to it if residents have a question. I got an email, and someone was asking me about how do we go about getting the fee waived? And I said, well, we follow the same policy that we had, but I just really wanted the current policy to have this temporary parking, overnight parking policy incorporated into it. What I was saying last time is that there are formatting issues with our current policies that it could just use a fair amount of work. I'd love to work with our staff on that, and perhaps, you know, Ms. Roman, anyone, you know, who can help us, you know, make this more accessible, because I know that we are trying to make everything on the website more accessible. When I go to update the policy, and I will update it based on what comes out of the pilot, you know, and so, so my whole point is that there will be another update to this, you know, even the temporary one, when we get to the end of the pilot and come March, whether we decide to move forward or not, I will just update it to incorporate what our decision is then. So, but let's try, my request is that we just put this temporary in place so that we have something official on the website that reflects that we are in, you know, this pilot phase, overnight parking.
Any questions or comments from the board? Motion?
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say thank you for your work, Mr. Diggins. I thought the edits were very clear, and maybe, you know, made obvious what was going on. So a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is 5-0 unanimous. All right. Take us to item 14, discussion and potential votes, special town meeting. And this is me. So I put this on because I thought that we might be, that I might consider in my conversations with various town officials, and we might be ready to schedule a vote for special town meeting. I don't think we're, I'm comfortable that we're quite there for a couple of reasons, one of which is Mr. Feeney's about to take over, and he, you know, he has to manage a pretty complex array of staff that are leading up to not only the MBT communities' work on the substance, but also the operations end of this. But then, secondly, I've been in conversations with various members of the planning department, including the department head. There is still a little bit of uncertainty about the timing of MBTA communities vis a vis the state approval process. I know that a lot of people would like to be able to plan their fall, who are in, people who are in town meeting involved, and I would too. What I would suggest to the board is I think that we're going to have some more clarity. I will have some more clarity in my work over the next week or two, and that, once that is the case, I don't really want to wait till the middle of August, so I would probably just call a special Zoom-only board meeting to set the date when I have a recommendation that all parties feel solid about. We just need probably a few more days. So that would be my suggestion. Mr. Hurd?
Motion to table to a date uncertain. To be determined.
So I'll second that, you know, but I guess, I mean, is it that you don't want to have any discussion tonight, or you just don't want to make any decision tonight?
Honestly, I think it's both, just because the, some of the conversations about the process were pretty recent and are still kind of in the middle of some discussions with the state regarding the timing of the state's review, and the best, just the best way to kind of finesse the timing for the MBT communities and the fossil fuel pilot. So I could have a much more informed discussion when we, when we, everything's ready. I think we're just a few days short of that, unfortunately.
All right. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is it that you are expecting that you will come to us with a date, and because so much is in place, we're essentially going to be, you know, kind of just rubber stamping it? Or is there going to be a point where we can really provide input that could, could affect the decision?
That's a very fair question. My intent would be the latter, you know, that I would be able to prevent, present, and probably invite the town officials to help present the options for the board to choose, because I think it is likely that there may be more than one scenario that we want to contemplate. So, yeah, no, I think that's well said.
All right. So it may not be that short a meeting, but that's okay. I'll play for that.
Mrs. Mahan.
And I'll leave this to your sort of calculating and working your way backwards, but just following the MBTA communities meetings, and it's been sort of like an AI transcript or something that you can read from that in terms of, especially around the MBTA communities, as you cited. Whatever the deadline date is concerning MBTA communities and whether we can make that, what that final date is, that we could push the envelope, because for some reason, I have it in my head, it could also affect the fossil fuels or something.
Yeah, they're bound together.
Right. And if for some reason of that two-tiered system, if MBTA communities wasn't at the point that it's ready and to submit, what does that mean to that second part? And is there anything we can do to mitigate that? Maybe that's no. And then the other thing is, if you could, when the special town meeting is set, and we're looking at the warrant articles that are in there, which I'm hearing there's probably going to be a lot of zoning, although this MBTA communities could cut that out, but if for some reason, just to consider, if there are quite a few in where the town manager, Mr. Poehler, did settle the contract with the police, who still, you know, aren't going to see anything, which nobody's fault, until it's voted at special town meeting, I don't know if that's something we can dispense of, you know, if we end up with like 40 warrant articles, if we can dispense that sooner rather than later.
In terms of the ordering of the warrant? Yeah, yeah.
But if there's a logical legitimate reason, we can do that, then we can.
Yeah, no, that's, I'll take that note. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think just to briefly answer, though, that one of the complexities here is making sure that we, you know, we're really going for compliance with the MBT communities law, which is a requirement, and then we're looking to qualify for the fossil fuel law, which is a requirement, and then we're looking to qualify for the fossil fuel tenant community pilot program, um, and those happen to have the same, essentially the same requirements for changing the zoning, um, to allow certain kinds of construction by, by, by right, um, that's the easy part, the hard part is that they each have their process of review, review, and so there's some finessing that, um, about just the best way to dovetail that right now, Attorney Heim.
If I could just add to that, just for the board's, uh, future planning, probably the, the, the tightest piece of it is that if we want to participate in the fossil fuel-free demonstration project, we'll need to have some acceptable version of MBTA Communities in place, and the Attorney General's office gets to take 90 days reviewing the zoning by law. That's not an initial problem under D U E R's regulations, but there is some concern that we would have to, um, that we would have to have that both passed, reviewed, and approved before the sort of February statutory period.
Yep.
So, that's probably the biggest time crunch that we, that we have, and just so folks remember, um, you can call a special town meeting relatively quickly, but it still needs to be posted, the warrant, for 14 days, so you kind of have to build backwards, so wherever the date we want to have town meeting, we've got to have the warrant posted for 14 days, and you can open and close the warrant on the same day, we have to give five days' notice before that happens.
Okay.
So that, you know, is, is, is one other sort of piece of the time I mean to consider.
Thank you, Attorney Heim, yeah, that's, um, that's another one of those considerations, and we have some work to do over the next week or so.
Thankfully, that's the chair's job.
Before I tell you, an extra stipend, really. That's right, okay, um, any other discussion on, uh, the motion to table by Mr. Hurd, and seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you very much. Item 15, appointment of acting town manager, July 29th through July 31st, so I get to haul out one of my favorite words in the dictionary, which is interregnum. And we have a period where we, we, we might need to do this, so I thought the better just, uh, the part of the discussion, uh, was just to do this, uh, that Mr. Poole retires, uh, July 28th, Mr. Feeney takes over August 1st, um, and so, um, we might end up covering a basis in having, having Mr. Poole name an acting town manager, but I, I think that it would be wise for the board to do that as well. Mr. Poole, um, this is a joint issue with you, do you have any comments or any intentions or advice?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, yes, it would be my intention to name, uh, Mr. Heim as the acting town manager for, um, July 29th, 30th, and 31st, um, and, uh, so I will put that in writing, but that is my intention.
My, my intention actually had been to suggest Mr. Feeney.
No, I'm sorry. I thought we had a miscommunication here.
Yeah, that's very right, uh, I think that, any, we have two excellent choices in front of us, actually, um.
I'm available.
So, three. My, my rationale, I think, I mean, we really can't go wrong here, my rationale is that, you know, Mr. Feeney might be a logical choice as deputy town manager, if you look at it from, from the front end on, of one contract, and the, and the rational choice for the incoming, uh, on the other end, um, as well for continuity, I'm not sure for those three days it makes a whole lot of difference, to be honest, so I'll turn to the board for their thoughts.
Well, I, I guess, I just wonder why we, we didn't do that in the first place, you know, but, but I'm fine, you know, I'm fine with either one, I mean, I mean, so, so.
That doesn't help. We'll try again, Mr. Hurd.
Doug, do you want to be acting town manager on a summer weekend? Jim's not here to advocate against it.
I'm warning you, I may put on an Admiral outfit that I didn't earn, with some medals and some aviator shades.
Oh, oh, wow.
No, I, I, I'm available, so, um, I, 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 I am present during that period of time, uh, but, so, I, I, whatever the board decides, I'll obviously be prepared for either my typical role, or if, if I'm needed, I'm happy to do it.
I just envisioned like the last day of Doug, like, hazing, Jim, like, I'm your superior, you go get me some coffee, before, before it all flips around, but.
It might be a good thing.
All right, well, at this point, I'm, I'm really happy with any scenario, but I do need a motion.
I'll move to appoint Attorney Heim as the, as the acting town manager.
Very good, we get the best of all worlds, uh, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, and seconded by, by Mrs. Mahan, to appoint Attorney Heim as the acting town manager, July 29th through July 31st, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous, good luck.
Thank you, I used to be able to do this, uh, back in the day, before there was an additional deputy town manager, it was a little bit more common, so I, I, I do have, I'll break out, I had a little folder that I would carry around, just in case something happened, so I'll, I'll find the folder again, so, thank you, appreciate you for the confidence.
Well, in that case, this is obviously the right decision, um, and Mr. Feeney will have his day, and hopefully years. All right, uh, item 16, vote to appoint the select board designee to the, to become one of the override committee co-chairs, Mrs. Mahan.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, as we all know that, having been through overrides, that exclusion, um, the main point person for us is, um, part of the Trinity, the triad of the override of the three co-chairs, um, and, uh, there is no one finer this time around, I think, than our Chair, Mr. Helmuth, to, um, be appointed as the, uh, select board designee to the, uh, is it November 7th, uh, 2023 override, uh, campaign, as well as I know in terms of, uh, uh, information the board needs to have, whether at select board meetings, or, uh, sort of a heads-up reminder from the Chair through the select board office, in terms of, um, upcoming, upcoming forums and the like that we should know about, so, I'd like to nominate Mr. Helmuth as the select board designee to the override campaign.
Second.
Any discussion on Mrs. Mahan's motion?
Well, see, there's someone as fine, you know, the, Mr. DeCoursey, but I'm not going to argue, you know, so, so.
I have full confidence in, in Mr. Helmuth.
And I will say, Mr. DeCoursey was a part of the Trinity, the triad, last time when I was, uh, last override, so he, um, he's definitely done it before.
I think Mr. DeCoursey's a little bit too eager to express his confidence. This is a very big job, because he knows what I'm getting into. All right, and a motion, uh, to appoint the current Chair of the Select Board, uh, as the Select Board's Chair, uh, co-chair spot for the override committee by Mrs. Mahan, and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is five to zero, unanimous. Okay, that takes us to correspondence received, request additional signage from Katie Trembley, Oxford Street and Winter Street, safety concerns, um, by number of residents in the neighborhood, and a stop sign request of Regis Road at Everett Street from the Arlington School Committee. I will, I did want to note that on the item 19, um, that, although I anticipated, a colleague of mine may well want to refer this to TAC, and I think that would be entirely appropriate, there is some short-term examination being done by, um, by, uh, cadre of town employees, uh, professionals, to just take a look to see if there is any kind of short-term option that could inform the TAC board. Mr. Quinsey?
Yeah, just a, a comment before a motion on, on, on number 19, and, and I know we, we received the letter, I was in here at the meeting on June 5th when the initial letter came in, but, um, this, this issue, and, and sometimes it goes to, to just communication and, and how, how we move forward, but back in 2021, on September 27th, 2021, the Regis Road residents came before us, and, and, uh, we voted through the Private Way Act for them to repave that road, and part of the discussion that we brought up at the end there was, because Regis Road was going to be repaved, they may want to come back to us because of the stop sign issue, um, and, and Regis Road is a little bit more complicated because it is a private way, but we're commenting on Wellesley Road and Patrick Street, putting stop signs in within a week of hearing from those residents, both of those roads being public ways, making it a little easier, but, um, for people looking back and, and for those who want to go back and take a look at all select board meetings, it's about 40 minutes in, and we had a, a discussion about that need, and I think this is an example of the type of thing where it comes before us, as much as we refer things to TAC, and TAC is very valuable, I think especially with this follow-up, and we, we see that this issue, I'd like to see these type of things handled through the board, and, and the town manager, VPW, and the police, uh, as opposed to referring it out, because it seems, if you go there, the issue on Regis Road is exactly what we had on Wellesley and Patrick, the only difference being Purcell's a one-way across from Regis, but Regis goes right into Everett Street, it, it seems like we should be able to do that quickly, um, and, and, uh, as we go forward, and, uh, you know, not, not have letters coming in from the school committee suggesting that we do things, and, and, you know, that goes to communication as well prior to those type of votes.
Well, well, I, I. Mr. Dick, sure. So I'm gonna say that, you know, TAC has been, been looking at, at this, you know, and, and, um, and so, I don't want to get ahead of the Chair on this, I mean, but, but, um, I mean, so, it's to say that, I mean, I'm glad that you're working with staff, I mean, and, because some of those staff, I mean, are on TAC, I mean, and, and, you know, providing, you know, valuable feedback, I mean, that was a, we had a good meeting, um, last week, I mean, um, and so, 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 yeah, and, and I'll also say on the additional signage, I mean, I'm trying to remember, I've only seen the presentation in TAC meeting, and that didn't come before the board, I mean, about things that we're planning to do at that intersection, you all aren't remembering that, right, I mean, okay, so then, it's only been presented in TAC, I'm not sure why it hasn't been presented to the board, so I will talk to the Chair, I mean, you know, and so, 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 was the motion made?
Not yet.
No.
So.
Go for it.
Sure, you know, so, so, I mean, should I refer them all to TAC, or, or was I hearing something different from?
You heard something different on number 19.
19, yeah, 19 town.
Yeah, all right, yeah, so, yeah, okay, fine, so, that's, then, let's refer the other two, you know, to TAC.
Have to receive on the 19.
Yes, yes.
Second, Mr. Hurd? Second, any further discussion? Okay, um, no, that's, that's worthwhile, and I, I do want to say I appreciate, uh, both, both Mr. Diggins and Mr. DeCoursey's points, I mean, TAC is extraordinarily valuable, um, and I think that, you know, we can, we can move, because as you, as Mr. Diggins points out, we have overlap of the same, much of the same staff, um, I know that the staff person that worked with Mr. Alessi, and I wouldn't say I'm working with it, that's an overstatement, um, he actually let me know that, that, you know, it, given that sort of time-sensitive request in the school committee, that they're, they're just going to take a quick look and see if, if a quick recommendation makes sense, um, it may or may not, you know, but it's still, it's still with TAC, so I kind of like, I, I rest better knowing that, that there's a couple of approaches, but I also know that they're not going to, um, because of his coordinating, that, that we'll, we'll avoid an adjudication effort, yes.
And, and I could talk with the Chair to find out, I mean, what she's comfortable with me saying, you know, in, in a meeting, and just framing the context, I mean, this is what we discussed, I mean, but, and, and if they want me to report out something official, I can do that too, because, because, I mean, we're liaisons, I mean, especially this committee, I mean, for a reason that hopefully, you know, makes the communication more efficient.
Good. All right, so, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, and seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, five to zero. All right, now we have board and staff announcements, um, I'm going to be a little unorthodox and lead off, and that's because there aren't that many times where you have the last meeting of a town manager at a select board meeting, and Mr. Poole, I hope you're still with us. I want to write, I will have four full remarks at the celebration, um, on July 27th, the Town Hall Auditorium, and this would be a good time to invite the public and town employees to attend, doors open at 6:00 PM, there'll be remarks at 6:30, and then buy some, we all report some good quality food and drinks at 7:00 PM, um, all to celebrate the remarkable, um, exceptional 32-year career in public service by, by Sandy Poole, um, I'm particularly grateful for his service to Arlington since 2016, came on as deputy town manager, um, really made a stamp in a lot of ways, I think the consolidated, um, finance department, um, financial department in, in the town is the top of my list, but has also been a champion of the EI initiatives, particularly in his last year as acting town manager, or as, as our, as our town manager for the year plus a month, um, in so many other ways, and I think we, I am very grateful, Sandy, for your steady leadership during this, um, period between our, our longer-term town managers, the timing worked out really well, I know that you had the confidence of your department heads before, um, and during your tenure, and, and you were grateful for your steady leadership at the helm during this period, um, so that we could take our time, make a fantastic decision to bring on Mr. Feeney, and, uh, know that we are grateful not only for your service to Arlington, but to the service to the public for, for 32 excellent years. And, uh, I will be further unorthodox by inviting the town manager to make his board and staff announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I don't really have any new business to announce, but I did want to take this moment to thank the board, uh, for the opportunity to serve as Arlington's town manager, um, this is a very well-run town that has a history of being well-run that goes back decades, and I am very happy to be a cog in that wheel, to help it continue to spin along, it's been my pleasure working with all of you, and, uh, with other board members beforehand, but particularly in this last year, and to see your dedication to the residents of this town, the citizens of this town, and all the programs that, uh, we put forward, um, it is a great place to work, uh, we have a fantastic staff, we have numerous, numerous citizens who volunteer their expertise and time, and we are very lucky to have a select board of people who have demonstrated over and over again their commitment, uh, to those citizens, to the progressive, forward-thinking values of this town, um, and so, I want to thank you again for those opportunities, I do look forward to having you all at the celebration party, um, and at that point, I will probably make some more remarks about 32 years in public life, a lot, but for tonight, again, I would just close out by saying it's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, we'll go back to our regularly scheduled announcements, Mrs. Mar, Ms. Mar.
That's.
Oh, yeah, I gotta stop doing that.
That's okay, I would also like to congratulate Sandy on his long career, and thank you for stepping up as town manager, I look forward to celebrating with you at your retirement party on the 27th, the only thing I'd like to also add is that the parking pilot program opened today, um, we've received 25 applications, so.
Wow.
We had to line up the door at 7:30 this morning, and 25 as of today, so, that's it.
Are you, are you serious about the lineup door?
Yes, I'm very serious.
Wow.
That's all, thank you.
Attorney Heim.
Uh, if the board will indulge me, I just want to share in my, I don't know if I'll get a chance or not later on, um, to just express my gratitude for the opportunity to work with Mr. Poole, uh, who has been a public servant for his entire, uh, career, and, you know, one of the things that, uh, I think sometimes just gets taken for granted, although Mr. Poole alluded to it, is just how well-run this town is, how lucky we are, and how much we make that luck, um, through this board, um, through, uh, its town meeting members, through, um, the chain of folks who work to keep this community operating at a extremely high standard, uh, Mr. Poole has taught a lot of us things that we didn't know we needed to know, um, his experience and breadth of experience in municipal government in particular, uh, not just in the finance side, but in the operations side, is something that so many of us, uh, probably who thought we knew a lot, were humbled by, um, and this past year, it's been a wonderful opportunity to work with and get to know, uh, Sandy in a whole new array of ways, um, as the manager, um, so, I, I, Sandy, I will miss you, and, um, very much value all the things that you've imparted to me, and many, many other, uh, staff who have not only enjoyed, uh, your leadership, but the things that you have been able to bring to the table, that frankly, there are just very few municipal, uh, government workers with that level of depth and knowledge, so, um, I am happy for you, uh, but, uh, we will, we will miss you and your wisdom, thank you, Sandy.
Well said, Mr. Tryon, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I know there'll be more remarks on, on July 28th, and the Chairman certainly has encapsulated it, but, you know, first I want to say to Mr. Poole, to Sandy, congratulations, uh, job well done, or jobs well done, um, uh, I wish you a long, healthy, happy retirement, and I was trying to think of something that's sort of unique coming from me to add to, what I could impart wi- with Mr. Poole, but one thing I do want to say, which I think is sometimes really difficult in, uh, different managers, town managers. town managers have risen to the challenge, and some have fallen flat in their face, and Mr. Poole certainly did not do that. I do appreciate the fact that the town manager, Mr. Poole, has to deal with five really distinct personalities here on the board. We have an awful lot of commonality in terms of what it is we do when we're doing our job, but we go about it different ways. And I do appreciate the fact that no matter how passionate I got about any one issue, Mr. Poole treated that professionally, didn't take anything personally, even when I kind of pushed the envelope five times too far on the table. And I will say that I may not have always gotten my way, but I always felt heard, and I will say, you know, in the end, I can stand by decisions that Mr. Poole has made, because I know he put a lot of thought and expertise and professionalism into those decisions, and that's something I do appreciate. Even when I thought maybe a different road or path should go down, I certainly felt listened to as well as given an explanation for why, you know, he's the town manager, and he made the decision he made, and I'm not, and I really do respect that, because sometimes that's difficult, because I know him a lot, but, so I want to say thank you, Sandy. God bless you, I've helped you earn this retirement.
Mr. Hurd?
Well, that's a tough act to follow. No, I do want to thank you for your years of service. We got put in a tough spot a year or so ago, and you really stepped up and really helped maneuver us through that situation, and you were the perfect guy at the perfect time for the job, and you've done an excellent job through your entire career, and certainly for your career at the town of Arlington, reworking the finance department, that is, your fingerprints will remain on our town finances for many years to come in a good way. And then as the town manager, you jumped into your new role and hit the ground running, and really were always responsive when I reached out to you, and you did a really excellent job, and I know many, many people here will miss you, including everyone on this board. I do wish you well, I envy you, I'm not there yet, but I do, you know, hopefully you get some summer months left and good weather. As soon as you retire, all of a sudden it's going to stop raining, so you can have some time to enjoy your retirement, so, congratulations.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, yeah, I also want to congratulate Mr. Poole and thank him for his service to the town and his public service throughout his career, and as Mr. Hurd said, Mr. Poole came in at a time that was difficult, we didn't have much time to act in terms of naming a new town manager, and right from day one, he was a steady hand, and I really appreciated that. I know department heads and employees in town were very happy that he was named, and that's a testament to the respect that they had for you, Mr. Poole. And I also enjoyed during the past year through work on long-range planning, you and I would have preparation meetings before and debriefs after the long-range planning, I enjoyed those meetings, and one thing, two other things I want to mention, is that very early after you were named, you made a point of having meetings with us, getting to know us a little bit, and I was really fascinated about the breadth of your career. I knew about Amherst, I knew a little bit about Newton, I didn't know about the House of, Mass House of Representatives, and we had some people in Newton that we both knew, but I enjoyed the stories of earlier days in your career, but I appreciated just getting to know you better. I mean, I did senior meetings at Finance Committee, but really enjoyed those extra meetings that we had in the past year, and really appreciate the work that you've done. I also appreciate, and I think the whole board does, the work you've done with Mr. Feeney since we named him, because this is going to be an easy transition in terms of him coming into the job, you've seen ahead, and there are things even tonight with the ARPA discussion that you've said, okay, that's something for Mr. Feeney to do. I know there's some hiring decisions that are coming up that you said, no, that's more appropriate for him to do. And that's a big hand to him, it's mentorship to him, particularly with finance-related items, but it's also good for the town in terms of passing along that knowledge and allowing him to grow even before he starts on the job. So thank you for outstanding career, I look forward to July twenty-seventh, and look forward to staying in touch after you retire.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Announcements?
And, hi again, Sandy. You know, I didn't see this coming, I should have, I mean, I should have known that we were going to say goodbye at this meeting, I was waiting, I was going to say goodbye to you at our weekly Monday meeting, you know, and then maybe again, you know, if I hopefully can make it to the retirement party, you know, and so, I hadn't really prepared anything, you know. I will just say, it is really nice when things that are so apparently logical work out, and then work out as well as you hoped they would, because it did seem really logical at the time, I mean, for Sandy, you know, to take over after Adam left, you know, and it seems, yeah, and so, and so as I said at the time, a really big thank you. I said it at the time, you know, and I say it again now, and I meant it then, I meant it even more now, you know, and Sandy's been able to handle thirty minutes, approximately thirty minutes of the land, of the adjusted land, every Monday, too, which is, you know, a testament to his patience, but I've learned a lot, you know, and I appreciate that, too, and also, as with Adam, I really appreciate your candor, you know, about me, my thoughts on things and ideas, and that always helps more than anything else, so thank you and good luck.
I believe that concludes our business for the evening. I think we've seen a motion to, I don't know.
One more quick thing.
Of course.
At the next meeting, even, maybe even the next short meeting, we could decide maybe our second meeting date in September, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yeah. I think everyone's going to be.
All right, we'll get that in, Jim. Thank you, sir. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Well, we have lots of options there. A motion by Mrs. Mahan, a second by Mr. Hurd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, adjourn.